Today is Monday, August 3rd, it's now 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please let us remain standing and think of seven United States Marine Corps members that were tragically lost, along with one Navy corpsman that died in a tragic accident on the West Coast. Please think of them and their families. Thank you. Have a seat. Okay, the upcoming meeting, the workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 31st, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Please note that the Village Board Workshop Meetings will now be held on the last Monday of each month. That still stands, Board?
Yes.
Good with that.
Okay. The regular scheduled meeting and the Board of Trustees meetings will be held on Tuesday, September 8th. Is that correct? We changed it from the Labor Day weekend to Tuesday? Is that correct, Board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to public participation for those members of the public that would speak. Please raise your hands and identify yourself with your name and your address, please. And I believe, who will be monitoring that?
Well, myself and Bruce will be doing it. And if you just indicate if they're on a phone to do *9.
Okay. So on a cellphone, press *9. That will indicate your hand is raised, and you will be acknowledged and state your name and address.
Since I'm not on a cellphone, my name is Fred Sauberman, and I live at 245 Parkside Drive in Suffolk. And I'm the guy with the hat on, because the host, I just received notice, is not giving me video permission.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have something you want to say?
Not at this point. No, I just want to hear and learn.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sauberman. So I believe he should be muted. There you go.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? This is the portion of the meeting where it's audience participation. Do we have any hands raised?
Uh, one second.
I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Magrino, what about you?
No, I don't see any. No. I see one, Gertrude.
Okay.
I see a few now, actually, yes. Why don't we start with Gertrude and go down the line?
Okay.
Gertrude, I've unmuted you, so if you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thanks so much. Um, I'd like to respond to the statement that Mayor Markounis made last month at the July 7th meeting regarding my FOIL request and the lingering issues. Much as I appreciate the mayor's statement and his efforts to provide some clarity, most of you who know me know that I'm pretty capable of speaking for myself, and I appreciate being given the opportunity to do so. Mayor Markounis is correct that the crux of the problem began with the trustees' illegal attempts to circumvent New York State law and the ubiquitous RFP that either exists or doesn't exist, depending on what day of the week you asked the question. And yes, he's correct in saying that trustee Gerard could and should shed light on the subject, even at this late date, so that it can finally be closed. In truth, any of the trustees who were involved in the original December appointment attempt owe it to the village to step up. And Paul or any of the trustees with relevant information are always welcome to reach out to me, as the mayor suggested. However, for me, there's a component to this story that's far more troubling. Again, Mayor Markounis is correct. The original FOIL request was made on February 3rd, even though the village clerk's preliminary 213 response incorrectly referenced a January 3rd FOIL. On 3/27/20, I received a final response from the village clerk attaching several documents that had little to do with my request, and including detailed instructions on how to appeal the response, which I subsequently did in an appeal dated 4/24/20, following the parameters laid out in the clerk's letter. Much as the FOIL process dictates a requestor's deadlines, it very specifically dictates the municipality's requirements to respond. According to New York State law, the appeals office has 10 business days to fully explain in writing the reasons for further denial or to provide access to the records. As the mayor indicated in his statement last month, I received a response on May 29th, not even close to adhering to the deadline. If this were an isolated incident, it might be less of a cause for concern. No one is infallible or expected to be. But meetings are often not publicly posted within the legal timeframe. Meeting minutes are most certainly rarely made available to the public within the timeframe mandated by New York State Open Meeting Law. Any village personnel that puts the village in legal jeopardy in such a way should be a concern to us all. Furthermore, the village clerk's office, in its capacity as the records' access officer, routinely sends out quote-unquote "acknowledgements" of FOIL requests as a means to buy time. While that ploy may in fact satisfy the letter of the law, it clearly disregards the intent of the law, which is to provide timely information to residents. When used appropriately and judiciously, an acknowledgement provides for the necessary time to properly research the request. When used routinely, it's just a loophole that excuses a job that may not be getting done properly. Back in April during this year's budget meetings, a significant number of residents expressed concern regarding the raises that were incorporated into the budget. Mayor Markounis, you asked me a question a while back, and I don't think I ever responded to you. You asked, "Don't I think that village employees deserve the raises outlined in the village's rules and regs?" Before I answer, I need to apologize to all the committed conscientious employees who know that I've supported them often publicly in past months and years, and will always continue to do so. But no, I don't believe that village employees should receive raises simply for showing up for work. I believe that raises should be merit-based, not summarily given out just because you clocked in for a certain number of months or years. I don't know how old those rules and regs are, but Mayor Markounis, I know you've reviewed and revised outdated portions of the village code, and I think maybe it's time the rules and regs receive that same updating. To do anything less is a disservice to the taxpayer. Finally, I don't know how we got to this point. To my recollection, I've never heard another resident's FOIL request scrutinized publicly at any board meeting, nor have I ever heard any attorney employed by the village try to intimidate a village resident, as Mr. Glickle did. Mayor Markounis, you've had two village attorneys under your administration prior to your recent current appointment, and I've never heard either Mr. Crashhour nor any of the Keenan Bean attorneys ever belittle or undermine a resident's question to the extent that this FOIL has been, and that the Board allowed this. It's disturbing. I will tell you quite frankly that the attorney who I shared this information with referred to Mr. Glickle's arrogance and strongly recommended that it be pursued in court if for no other reason than to teach a lesson. There are a number of articles available that talk about FOIL requests. While they, of course, stress the importance of following the law, many of them talk about the importance of dealing with a resident's request amicably rather than adversarially. I know how different I would have reacted had this been handled amicably. I'm saddened to see the level of service this village has received in the past now be replaced, it seems, by Mr. Glickle's approach, because it's interesting to note that one of those articles that I referred to was written by Keenan Bean. Ed, I remember both you and Lance Klein mentioning at an early March meeting that the village had not had a single lawsuit during the time Keenan Bean represented us, and I can see why. By contrast, Mr. Glickle's seat wasn't even warm yet, and you were already presented with a potential lawsuit. I'd be remiss if they didn't point out that this whole process doesn't reflect the transparency that I've come to expect from the village, nor the even-handed fairness that I've come to appreciate from Mayor Markounis's administration. And if any of you can offer insight into how this was allowed to happen, that too would be much appreciated. But I hope that this entire Board, all five of you, give some thought to what I've said going forward, or I fear that the village will find itself in court more frequently than taxpayers deserve. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Simba Blatt. What I can say is with these FOIL requests, that a long and arduous process and applying the timeframe to them and the best ability that the village clerk has to provide a response and an answer is of utmost and of most timely fashion as possible. Also, to say that merit-based raises are not something that we look at, we look at the contractual obligations and the work rules that we have in place. And to say that, I would sit here and say that Ms. Patronrod's dedication and commitment and superior work ethic to this village is admirable and irreplaceable. That, we will definitely make the process more streamlined or more timely, absolutely. FOIL requests in this village has become a way to bog down village government with so many FOIL requests, and people are entitled to it, and the transparency is there, and that's why we have FOIL in place. So thank you for your comments. Mr. Glickle, can you just respond a little bit and touch on the FOIL process?
Absolutely. FOIL was a part of the open meetings and open government law of the state of New York, contained in the Public Offices Law of the U.S. state. The key concept is that there'd be access by the citizens to their government and to the workings of government. But before I get into explaining some of the points of the FOIL, I do not understand, I cannot appreciate, and will not accept the comments by this requestor concerning what's supposed to be my arrogance. Now, the fact of the matter is, is that requestor received an answer. Fact of the matter is, is that the FOIL was responded to. Fact of the matter is, is that the requestor does not like the answer that was received, and yet I can assure you that the mechanism and the manner in which this FOIL was handled is totally in keeping, not only with the law of the state of New York, but also in keeping with the village's own code. When someone makes a FOIL request and they receive a response which either is a denial, which in this case it never was, they certainly have the right and are so notified, and were in this case notified, of the ability to appeal the response from the records' access officer. One of the aspects of FOIL, which is merely to grant access to documents and information that exists, and that's the key word, that exists within the village, there is no duty whatsoever imposed by the law, and there never has been, for the creation of any document or information which does not exist. FOIL doesn't provide for it. It's not the intent of the Freedom of Information law. But again, with regard to this matter...
So go back to that?
The requestor certainly was informed of the right to appeal, and under the village code, that process requires that the issue then goes to the Board as the quote-unquote "appeals officer." Personally, I think that's a little bit cumbersome, and we've discussed perhaps revising that section of the code so that one individual, rather than the entire Board, may be designated by the mayor or the Board to serve as the FOIL appeals officer. But again, I think it's very important for every single person who has participated or has joined in this meeting to know that this is not a question of any arrogance on the part of Mr. Glickle. And while it would be very easy for me to invite this requestor to retain counsel, I certainly don't recommend that the requestor attempt to do this pro se and file an Article 78 proceeding. They certainly have the right to do so. But before I close, I intend to read into the record at this point in time how the response to the FOIL appeal was handled by the Board. It was done professionally, and it was done in accordance with law, and it was done in a manner that explained the law. Now, if an explanation is somehow perceived as arrogant, that I certainly cannot answer and will not answer. But I will not be subject to any sort of Facebook or cyberbullying by someone who anonymously or, if not anonymously, sits behind an electronic curtain and points a finger at me. That's not going to happen. On May 27, 2020, Gertrude Siverblatt received the following response, who was sent via email and US mail. Dear Ms. Siverblatt, in accordance with Section 213-7A of the Code of Village of Suffolk and the New York Public Offices Law, Section 893A, the quote-unquote "appeal" of your FOIL request received by the village on or that February 3, 2020, which was answered by the village clerk in her capacity as the village's records' access officer on March 27, 2020, has been forwarded to the Village Board of Trustees. A review of the village's response to your request reveals that your request wasn't denied, rather, they were attached and you were provided access to those records that the clerk could locate after a diligent search, as well as stating the results of the communications with trustee Paul Gerard. While, absent the denial of your request, no appeal lies, the Board is providing the following explanation. Upon further investigation, the other records you've sought to access per your request do not exist. After receiving your quote-unquote "appeal," the village renewed its search for those other records. The clerk has confirmed and certified that there is no written RFP, and there's a footnote. Under New York's general municipal law, professional services, that is services requiring special or technical skill, training, or expertise, where the individual firm is selected based on intangibles, such as accountability, reliability, responsibility, skill, education, and training, judgment, discretion, integrity, and moral worth, are exempt from competitive bidding. Formal or written requests or proposals to RFPs are not required or necessary for the procurement of attorney services. A search of the relevant village email account showed no emails or other correspondence addressing the topic of your FOIL request. The clerk's certification of no records accompanies the Board's explanation. Finally, your request for the creation and submitting of a quote "signed statement" to the village is denied. The Freedom of Information law is based upon a presumption of access to existing government records. As New York's Committee on Open Government explains, FOIL does not entail the creation of records. The Freedom of Information law pertains to records. It is not intended to be used as a vehicle for cross-examining government officials or employees. Therefore, an agency is not required to answer questions or to create a new record in response to questions. Thank you for your interest in Suffolk Village Government, very truly yours, the Village Board of Trustees by Joe Megan Carrigan trustee. Now, in response to that, this requestor sent a letter to the village, raring amongst other things, the requestor threatened that the trustees may be in danger of committing perjury. Perjury is a crime in the state of New York. Now, I will not sit here and allow anyone to accuse my clients with the consent of this Board, including the mayor, of a crime that has never been committed. There is no sworn testimony, there is no oath, and what we have at best is a layperson trustee misspeaking and identifying an RFP, which by the way, there definitely was a request to at least one and maybe more than one attorneys to serve in the capacity as village attorney. And in fact, one of the documents that was provided to the requestor was the letter from attorney Terry Rice, and anyone who knows Attorney Terry Rice and his curricula vitae, certainly when it comes not only to village law of the state of New York, but the Village of Suffolk, where he has served honorably and for many years as the Suffolk Village Attorney, would question any trustee reaching out to him. And in fact, our friend Charles Barone had stated in the meeting, I believe, of January, which I had viewed the entire video of, that in his opinion, Terry Rice was the gold standard when it came to land and zoning questions and village law. I would not compare him to the head coach of the New England Patriots, however, because I do not like the New England Patriots. But certainly to the extent that anyone would reach out to a lawyer and ask that lawyer for a proposal, that in fact represents an RFP. But again, I have to stress that when we're talking about professional services, it is highly unusual, not illegal, not necessarily even irregular. And maybe some people might even say it's advisable, but it certainly has never been required under the law of the state of New York that a written RFP be created or published when we're talking about attorney services. And I have one last word for the requestor. If in the future she should seek, ever, ever, to defame this lawyer, we will get to meet in person, and we'll discuss it in great detail at that time. But I'll be damned, matter of fact, I'll be goddamned if some person is going to come on this Board meeting and question the ability of someone who's dedicated their life to the rule of law for 45-plus years, is a recipient of a lifetime achievement award of the Robin Kennedy Bar Association, and has chaired that association's ethics committee for over a quarter century. It's not going to happen in whatever time I have left on this planet. And that's all I have to say about that, the quote Forrest Gump.
Thank you, Mr. Glickle. Thank you for those comments. And once again, just to reiterate, my staff also here in Village Hall goes above and beyond their daily service. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has their hand raised?
Yes, I see Amanda Melendez. I'm going to unmute now. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, hello, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Amanda Melendez. I'm a resident at 6 Riverside Drive. My pronouns are she/her and they/them. I have sent multiple emails, and this is mostly in regard to the Black Lives Matter protest that happened here over the past month, a month back or so, in June, and then also regarding the Blue Lives Matter rally that happened in the past month in July 12. I don't have a prepared statement, but what I do have is a lot of words from the emails I have sent to a majority of the Board. I would appreciate and give a shout out to Stephen Alpert, that has personally responded to multiple of my emails, so I thank him for that. And also, I believe Mr. Gerard has also done that as well. What I would like to say and firmly say is that, starting with the Blue Lives Matter rally, is that, and I quote from my own personal email, "This Blue Lives Matter rally has not shocked me, but has gravely disappointed and disgusted me. This rally shows that Suffolk does not care for its black, indigenous, and people of color residents." I am a person of color. I'm a Latinx resident here, living and suffering. And this rally diminishes the harm that is being done to the black people here in this county and in this country overall. Black people are being murdered and lynched at the hands of police simply for being black. Blue lives do not exist. It is a job and a uniform that can be taken off. Black people cannot choose their skin and must live with it day in and day out. The police are not oppressed systematically and disproportionately harmed in the ways in which black people are. They are in a position of power, and we are demanding rightful accountability for these abuses. I know for many of the people that are currently in this meeting right now, we have banded together in order to demand for lots of change within Suffolk that I believe, in my own personal experience, is long overdue, and to many of the folks that live here that are people of color, that feel that Suffolk has kind of undergone and not thought about the racism and the subtle covert racism that is done in this town and in this county overall. And it is very hard to deal with as a person that grew up here her whole entire life. And I've also seen it, it was kind of distasteful to see that the Blue Lives Matter rally was put together secretly. I was there and saw the people that were there. It was mostly and primarily white folk that were there. I did not see many people of color, and it seemed that the message was quite hateful, in my personal opinion. I do understand that Mr. Markounis, the mayor, that you are a retired police officer. I understand that your alliance to the police is understandable because of your experience as a retired NYPD police officer, but the fact that you doubled down in your response to what had happened was disheartening to many in the community, and once we found out about the rally, it was very hard to see your point of view. That is from one email that I had sent. Another thing that I would like to mention is, many of the Suffolk residents respectfully and intelligently voiced their opinions against this rally on its official Facebook post and were promptly removed, censoring all proof of dissent against blue lives. Further residents were blocked from commenting on all of the issues happening in their backyard. Again, this rally and its subsequent censorship were endorsed by the police department. We do not want this symbol of hate in our home. What I would really like to see is having some sort of board be made, primarily by black and people of color residents in this community, in order to do a lot more work in terms of having anti-racism. Another thing that I would also like to bring up is that many of the residents here, me including myself, have feel like we have not been heard, and all the emails that we have been given and the responses we have been given. We are people that are living in this county. I personally have experienced racism in this county. Despite if you have not have, if you have not experienced that racism here, it still exists. It happens, and that needs to be said. I know many of the people that are right now on this call have also backed me up in saying these claims and all of the discussion that we are having with family members and also friends that live in this town, and we are seeing lots of hate that is happening because of these social and uprisings in accordance to Black Lives Matter. What I would also... What I would also like to say is I see from the mayor's response in terms of the rally happening that you stated that the motto of Suffolk is Suffolk says be kind. What, that is what really matters. But how can this be possible when people do not recognize the humanity of black, indigenous, and people of color? This message was not seen with this rally, nor the government backing of the police in this town. These actions are further dividing the town. Kindness is great, but that is not systemic change. And it is clear that there are people in power that do not care. I, along with other black, indigenous, people of color community members, do not feel heard in this response and the inaction towards actual change in our town. There has been covert racism in this town for age, and it is now coming to light. This is a time to listen to BIPOC residents, to make real change for Suffolk, and to make these residents feel supported and heard, and to make Suffolk to be the quote-unquote "perfect place" you claim it to be. I would urge you to listen to black voices, read from black authors, and communicate better with our black residents. Black lives matters. It is not a political stance. It is just asking for basic humanity and decency. Black lives matters and Black futures matters. Thank you for listening for the whole time that I've been speaking, and I thank you very much, and I yield my time.
Next, I see Claire Silverberg. Their hand raised, and I've unmuted you, I believe.
Hi, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Claire Silverberg from eleven Essex Lane. My pronouns are also she/her, and I'm also here to discuss the Blue Lives Matter rally that took place on July twelve. And it hasn't really been grappled with here, but I'm not sure if you were aware. This rally was hosted in support of other rallies all over New York City, many of whom, which, in Brooklyn especially, I believe in the Bronx, but definitely in Brooklyn, they erupted in a lot of violence against the counter protesters. And whether or not, it's hard to grapple with, but if you supported that rally that day, you were also supporting that violence. It's, I'm sorry, but it's your opportunity to educate yourself. And I know that while people in Suffolk specifically did not incite violence against the counter protesters, that is the, that is the support that you showed that day. I also want to talk about some of the responses I received from the emails I sent. I also, I received a response from Mr. Alpert, Mr. Gerard, and also Mr. Markunis. To, I guess, to just start with Mr. Markunis's response to my email. I felt that it honestly showed that there were some parts that it seemed you kind of just skimmed over the email. I feel like a lot of my concerns were not dealt with in talking about the community garden. My email was asking how you will protect black lives in our community and how you will show them that you support them during this time. And I don't see how a diversity garden is anything real. For, like, how does that help anyone? I, I think it's all symbolic, and I think that there's nothing that's actually being done. The petition, I want to bring up a petition about the blue line also. Sorry, it's a bit disorganized. I just have some bullets to get through. But there was a petition on change.org to remove the blue line that got over two thousand signatures. There are comments on it. And additionally, when you look at it, the signatures are growing. I think that we need to talk about the fact that there is support for black lives in Suffolk. My email response from Ed Markunis said that they showed support at the Black Lives Matter protest. I was there personally. And after watching some of the footage from Blue Lives Matter rally, Ed, I know as your former job as a police officer, I can understand why you would feel inclined to speak at Blue Lives Matter, but seeing that there was an official proclamation for Blue Lives Matter, which it stands in direct contrast to Black Lives Matter. It's a movement that literally emerged to counteract Black Lives Matter, showing official support with a proclamation at the Blue Lives Matter rally when nothing of the same caliber was done at the Black Lives Matter protest. I just can see a real inequality right there in the support. And I think that's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you. Next, unless you have something. I see Gina Bertolino.
Okay, can you just, just to make a clarification in regards to the past two speakers in the response to the email in regards to the Black Lives Matter movement and the participation, they were both organized by civic-minded people, citizens, private peoples. It was not a village-sponsored event. Was, I was not asked to speak at the Black Lives Matters movement, but I felt that I needed to represent where I sent flowers over to the, to the movement, to the rally, along with the wreath, along with reaching out through the Imam from the mosque to represent and show togetherness. The wreath that he carried through the streets of Suffolk showed solidarity, excuse me. He also brought that wreath back down to Spring Valley. That was, that is the difference with not being invited, not, not being invited. That's what I can say. I was not invited, Blue Lives Matters rally. I was invited to speak. I am working directly with the Commissioner of Human Rights of Rockland County as we speak, even before COVID started, we were developing the Be Kind campaign to be able to reach out to our communities of BIPOCs, to reach out to Latinos, to reach out to people of color, to reach out to our senior citizens, to reach out to our underprivileged, reach out to our veterans, reach out to all in need. All lives matter. We all matter. And I will continue to do that. I was in discussion with, with the Commissioner of Human Rights, discussing this. This is going to continue. This is not unheard. It is not falling on deaf ears. I just want to bring that to your attention. I did receive the emails, and I did respond along with the board members. That's great. We are working towards the same goal, and we will continue. So thank you very much for, for those words. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next hand was Gina Bertolino. Unmuted.
Ms. Bertolino.
I speak? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Gina Bertolino, seventeen Hillcrest Road. I also am an owner of a business, Mystic Images, for twenty-nine years in the Village of Suffolk. I just wanted to, well, actually, I have a couple of things to say since I've heard some other stuff spoke about. But first, I would like to say that the event, the Art and Dine Walk event, which was this past Saturday, was an amazing event. And I was glad to be a part of it. And I just want to say thank you to the village, the village board, the rec department, the Suffolk Chamber, Rockland Tourism. I sat at the registration table, and as people came in, they just thanked us so much for having such an event. People were just happy to be out. I think this is one of the best collaborations we've had as an event. I've been involved in so much stuff over the years, all different kinds of events. And we had such a great response. It was great for the community to be able to get out, fresh air with their families, enjoy some beautiful art, be able to dine outside and be safe. We made sure we were all safe for COVID nineteen, followed protocol. It was a great event, and I just want to say thank you so much. I hope we can continue to do events like this in the future together. So thank you for that. And I wasn't, I had no intention of talking about Black Lives Matter, but since the young lady brought it up, I would just like to say something. I am a woman of color. And I support Blue Lives Matter. I went to the rally, and I was there. And I support law and order. Is there police brutality? Yes. Does that mean all police are like that? There's racism, and I believe there'll unfortunately always be racism in the world, not just here. Growing up in Queens, black people bullied me, and I had to fight for myself almost every day at school. Then I moved to, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
And white people bullied me. So where do I stand? So I look at people. Everyone is their own person. I can't blame all white people for bullying anyone of color or race creed. And I can't blame all black people for bullying me. Because they're not, not everyone is like that. And I choose to live my life that way. And my opinion of anyone is based on whether or not they're good to me or anyone else. I did not go to the Black Lives Matter protest because I am a business owner, and I was preparing to reopen my salon and try to save it. And alls I had to worry about and think about, is my place going to get trashed? Is my place going to get set on fire? That's what I had to think about, and so did other merchants, I know for a fact. We live in America. I shouldn't have to think that way. I should not be afraid that someone is going to trash my business that I built for twenty-nine years. You don't have the right to do it. So I didn't want to be there if that possibly could happen. And thankfully, it was a peaceful protest. I thank God for that, for everyone. And I do think black lives matter. All colors matter. My color matters. Everyone matters, and I know you don't like to hear that, but we do. Change should come, but not at the cost of everyone else. I didn't hurt anyone. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Bertolino. That was truly heartfelt and, and really hit the core. Social injustice is a problem across the United States. It's a problem across New York State. It's a problem across the county. And that's the common goal we should all be looking at to remedy. And I believe that each and every one of us on this board feel the same way. Thank you, Ms. Bertolino. Is there anyone else that has their hand raised?
Yes, Mayor, I have a Johnny Friedman.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Your name and address, please.
Hi, Johnny Friedman, sixteen Dakota Court. I'd like to start by saying Black Lives Matter. Blue lives are not a thing. It's just a profession, just like I'm an engineer. I cannot say engineering lives matter because I can quit my job anytime. Being a cop is a choice that you choose to go to every day. You get paid for it, and it is a job. Black people can't decide that they no longer want to be black. You know, that's something you have to live with day in, day out. Similarly, as to another concerned resident was about their business being destroyed, people of color are on the street all the time worried about their own lives. You know, a building or a business can be rebuilt. A life cannot be put back once it is taken. So really, all lives do matter at the end of the day, but all lives aren't in danger right now. And we should be focusing on the people who are most vulnerable amongst us. I don't really have anything else to say. Just wanted to voice my support. I think the Blue Lives Matter rally was really, I mean, the line has been there. As was mentioned in the email, the line's been there for a while. And clearly, the timing of the rally and the rededication was incredibly pointed. You could have done that at any other time. But right now, in the middle of the focus and attention on the Black Lives Matter movement, it seemed to be incredibly intentional. So you can't defend yourself by saying, well, we've always had it. We were just rededicating it. This was clearly an intentional action. I don't really have anything else to say, like I guess, Black Lives Matter. I yield my time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, I have Mary Grace. You're unmuted, I believe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Um, kind of going off of what Mr. Friedman just said. Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Mary Mulligan, and I live at One Overlook Drive.
One where? I'm sorry.
One Overlook Drive.
One Overlook Drive.
Yes, may I continue?
Sure.
Thank you. So I just wanted to go off what Mr. Friedman said. I don't think it's ever wrong to want to celebrate cops. I understand my father was a detective in Midtown North for almost twenty years, so I understand. You know, no one goes into that, you know. Not usually, people don't go into that for the wrong reasons, but unfortunately, maybe not because you're a cop, maybe because, not you specifically, but because a lot of cops happen to be white men. There's an attitude that, and I've met a lot of cops, I've met a great cop, a lot of shady cops, and that's just because that's what's going to happen with any group of people. But I do think to have the rally a week after the other one, maybe you didn't mean for it to be blatantly insensitive. I honestly don't think you did. But that's how it comes off, because like you said, that really could be done at any time. Now, like, this should be a time, like, an exciting time where finally a certain community that has felt slighted for so long, and, you know, justifiably so, more than justifiably so, like, it's not crazy to understand why that's insulting. Again, I don't think that was the intention, but that's how it comes across because it's like, finally, the platform is big enough. Enough people are talking about it. It's getting the steam. So do all lives matter? Like, yes, like, saying that is not inherently wrong. But when you're saying that, you are saying like, but, like, you're listening to someone, like, they're explaining, we don't want to be killed. Mothers don't want to worry about their children more because they're black. And you're saying, yeah, but, but we matter too. And of course you do, but cops haven't been ignored, Kreeno, their entire existence in this country. So I just think it's just not seeing eye to eye. I don't think anybody's trying to be malicious. I think it's just a tragic misunderstanding, really. But also, and as Ms. Bertolino says, we are all like enabling the system to continue. And it's hard and it's not, you know, easy to admit that you are benefiting off of something that's hurting other people, but it is so real right now. And we have a really good chance to like, there's really no way to ever fully make amends, but we have a chance to start and to at least prove that we want to. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just, just to say a few things in regards to that, that the outreach here in the Village of Suffolk through the police department, through my office, through the office of the mayor, which I, which I stated earlier, reaching out to the, I'm going to say, all people in need, be it BIPOC, people of color, blacks, indigenous, whites. This police department in the Village of Suffolk for twenty-five to thirty years has shown nothing but outreach and fairness to the entire community, even outside the borders of the Village of Suffolk, to neighboring communities, to communities down in Piermont and Nyack. I know that, but to Puerto Rico. We have had drives and shipped foods and goods to Puerto Rico trying to help our fellow brothers and sisters. Trying to help our fellow brothers and sisters, we are all the same. No one, as you said, wants to be killed. Nor does a police officer want to be killed. We wanna all, all, live in a safe environment, in a safe village, a safe town, a safe state and a safe country. And that is our goal. But this police department has gone above and beyond in every fashion. Is there anyone else that has their hand raised?
Yes, next is Maya Williams, I've unmuted you, if you wanna give it a try.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, my name is Maya Williams, I live at 20 Mary Beth Drive.
Where is, where is Mary Beth Drive?
Off of Campbell.
Off of Campbell, okay.
Okay, um, there's a lot to address here. Uh, I will say that it's, it's been very difficult listening to this right now. As a person of color, I feel that my voice isn't really being heard right now. First of all, I do want to address, uh, the All Lives Matter and Blue Lives Matter, um, movements. Both of those are really a direct response to the Black Lives Matter movement and an attempt to take away from them. Whether residents, um, and you Mayor Markounis mean it to be that way, they really. If you do some research on it, they really were created in a direct attempt to take away from Black Lives Matter. And while All Lives Matter, while All Lives obviously do matter. The Black Lives Matter movement is supposed to specifically bring attention to the black people in America that face inequality. So I think that, you know, saying All Lives Matter really just takes away from those people that really face inequality in our country.
You know, Maya, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's not just black. It's Latinos, it's Puerto Ricans, it's, it's indigenous people, you cannot just continue to say black. It's all.
I, I 100% agree.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, it's all, it's, it's white. It's, it's all people. It's all people, think about it.
Okay, I, I do agree that other people do face inequality, however.
You do, Ms. Williams, women face inequality on a daily basis, which is not fair. I'm, I'm sorry, I have that, that passion in my voice. But even women, it is not fair, you are 100% right. But we need to get to the table, we need to come to a table, we need to be guided. There needs to be, um, collaboration between groups, not violence. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very passionate about it, as you are, I.
Yeah, I understand, I 100% understand, I do, um, I do get your point. I just think that it's very difficult to be able to focus on that many people at the same time. And I think what the Black Lives Matter movement is trying to do, can I actually turn on my video?
I think so.
Okay, I feel better being like face to face. I think what the Black Lives Matter movement is trying to do is to bring light specifically to black people. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, you know, we can't. Like, it's, it's very difficult to focus on so many people at the same time. So I think it's okay to be like, hey, these are people that are struggling right now, let's focus on them. Like, it, it would be saying like at a breast cancer walk, like, hey, all cancers matter. You know, like where, but we're talking about breast cancer right now, does that make sense?
Well, I mean, i- if, if you look at it in, in that fashion, you know, it can, but we still have to focus. We cannot just alienate certain groups while we work on other groups. It has to be, um, cohesive and collaborative with all at the same time. Like, like myself, during COVID, what we were doing, reaching out to the people in need throughout the village. All people, I could not focus on one particular type of person. Be it a senior, a Hispanic, a black, a white, or a senior. We had to look at the broad spectrum, we had to help everyone at the same time as much as possible. That's, that's the way I would look at it. It is very challenging, very challenging and a big undertaking. But we will continue to work with human rights.
Okay, I understand, um, I do want to address also the violence aspect. I understand, uh, where Ms. Bertolino was coming from and being a little nervous that her business was going to be. You know, destroyed by the protest, but I also want to acknowledge that that's really from watching the news. You know, the news is obviously going to focus on the violent aspects of the protests, but most of the protests really have been peaceful. And the Black Lives Matter movement in general is not a violent movement. We're really just trying to bring some light to people that have been systematically oppressed. So in order to make those things equal. You know, there's gonna be a lot of people involved, like sometimes things might get a little out of hand. But I think you need just to look at the general picture and focus on the people that are being peaceful and really trying to, um, do some good work here. Um, I also do want to acknowledge that, uh, my friend Claire actually, and I were the ones that had written the templates, the email templates that a lot of you guys received. Um, and I appreciate you reading them and acknowledging them. But I do feel like a lot of our concerns were dismissed. Um, I also wanna say that I hope that you don't take the emails as an attack. I know that, I feel like a lot of the, um, responses were really just defending Suffolk police. And we're really not trying to attack Suffolk personally. I think what we're trying to do is, you know, reach out to our local government, because a lot of these changes do happen on a local level. So just as people supporting the Black Lives Matter movement, we're just trying to do our part. And, you know, contact our local officials who happen to be you guys, so. I don't, I don't mean to personally attack you or the Suffolk Police Department, but we do have to acknowledge what our town does. To, you know, affect systemic oppression. And while it might not be a horrible town with a horrible, um, abusive police department, you know? This is a systemic issue and the fact that we're predominantly white town is not an accident. The fact that, um, Spring Valley was a town that, you know, their education system was destroyed. And then there was white flight and now it's a predominantly black community, that's right next door to us, that's not an accident. So I just think that those things need to be acknowledged and I just hope that, um, you know, people of color in our community are being listened to.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Uh, the next person whose hands is raised is Sam Donato. You're unmuted.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live at, uh, 76 Smith Hill Road. Um, I'd just like to add on to what a few other members have said today, um, in support of Black Lives Matter. I hope, I'm gonna try and zoom out a little bit outside, I know this is a town meeting outside of Suffolk, just to hope. That we can all understand this a little bit better. One of the largest things that we're trying to address is police brutality as an issue, um, in, at a systemic level. Like Maya said earlier, we're not necessarily talking directly about Suffolk. As a resident, I do recognize the work that our police department has done and I can respect that. But America as a country experiences police brutality on levels that are not experienced in other countries in the world. And I think a lot of people don't realize that. In addition to that, the police brutality, um, people of color are disproportionately affected by it, specifically black people. I know Mayor Markounis, you mentioned, what about Puerto Ricans, what about other races? And I think that is one of the reasons why Black Lives Matter is being promoted. Um, another thing I'd like to address is the idea of equality. And again, one of the reasons why the phrase Black Lives Matter and why the movement Black Lives Matter exists is because currently, black lives are not equal. And that's the whole point, is to try and get everybody on the same playing field. Uh, just as how feminism is not a way to get women to be better than men. Just, it's the same, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking clearly here, it's the same parallel. So to talk about Blue Lives Matter, um, to draw another parallel. Don't even know where to start. Just as other people have mentioned, the thing that is hurtful about it is that it is a response, it's not necessarily an original idea. I know when a lot of LGBT plus pride parades were happening, there were straight pride parades in response. It's the same idea, no one's saying that you can't be straight, but the fact that that is your response to people trying to celebrate who they are is disrespectful. The fact that your response to Black Lives Matter is Blue Lives Matter is disrespectful and it feels like you're not necessarily listening to the root of our issue. I urge you to determine personally what you think is more important. The feelings of cops or the lives of black people? I also want to address a statement that was made before, I believe by Mayor Markounis, saying that we are all the same. Issue is that we are not all the same and that if you don't experience what somebody else has experienced, you may think it doesn't happen. My experience at Suffolk, I am a person of color myself, but I'm ambiguous, so it necessarily wasn't as bad as some other people's. But that's not to say that I didn't go through some questionable things in my experience here. And the thing is, again, if it doesn't happen to you, you might not think about it, or you might not think it's that severe. What I'm telling you, as somebody who went through the Suffolk School District. Racism is here in our town and it might not be in the ways that you think. Uh, and that's another thing that we're trying to bring issue to. Something like All Lives Matter, that you may not think is a racist statement inherently can be. It's not an issue of white kids poking at black kids saying, oh, look at those guys, that's, that's not always, uh, the situation. There's so many microaggressions that happen on a day to day basis that aren't being recognized. The last thing I'd like to say is that I hope that I, it can be difficult when there are so many of us saying the same thing. It does feel like an attack and I definitely don't wanna come off that way. Again, I do wanna recognize the fact that our town might not necessarily be undergoing the same levels of violence as other places. But that doesn't mean that our police and white people don't benefit from the same unjust system that other places do as well. I'd like to urge everyone to listen, to understand, not to respond. A lot of what has been going on is kinda cherry picking things that you don't necessarily like or things that you didn't wanna hear. And then just kinda combating that right away. And I understand that being a natural response, and again, because it does, it might sound like an attack, but I do not mean it to be that way. Take this as, I guess, constructive criticism from town residents and where we wanna see the town go in the future. Thank you for listening.
I am listening, I believe the board is listening, but at the same time, we all, once again, must listen, and I keep using that term all. And to indicate that, that police brutality is systemic throughout policing is unacceptable at the same time. You know, we're labeling the police department here as being. Brutal, and it's, and it's just, it's not accurate. There is no police brutality here in the village of Suffolk, maybe outside. And I, and I believe that police officers, as you all stated, because you all know my background. We do not stand for police brutality. We do not stand for racism. Everyone is treated fairly. When there are reforms in place, from the beginning, from a young child, whoever that child may be. Something has failed that child from birth till the time they're in the police custody. There's, there, it, it, there's an issue across the board. We cannot single out the police department as the, as the catchall. I believe they are not, I believe there are issues that need to, to be addressed. Social injustices, absolutely. But we cannot single out one division, one department, one, uh, profession. It's not, it's not their issue, they're at the end of the line. We need to look at it globally, systemically, from education to social, uh, social injustices, wherever they exist. Healthcare, education reform. We believe, we understand, it is a huge problem, but I welcome all your comments. And, and I would be glad to meet with you to discuss them further in detail, you know, maybe in person someday. Is there anyone else?
Yes, we have Jake Mariello, you're unmuted, I believe, if you wanna try.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there, so I'd just like to start in reference to the business owner who is scared that her business is gonna be burned down during the Black Lives Matter riots. Why aren't you scared when the Suffolk High School predominantly white students have their senior scavenger hunt and tear up the town? Just starting with that. Mayor Ed, I'm just wondering why you felt you needed an invite to the Black Lives Matter rally? I didn't receive an invite and I showed up because I supported it. And I understand that you have your personal belief about the Black Lives Matter movement. But at the same time, showing up to Blue Lives Matter rally, whether you were invited, whether whatever, is taking a side. And I think that this is, that's a very clear stance that I think we have all noticed. I came into this meeting very disappointed with the village of Suffolk and all of its members. And I really am leaving this meeting just as disappointed. I feel that a lot of people are speaking and everything's kinda just being met with, but All Lives Matter, but All Lives Matter, but All Lives Matter. All Lives Matter, everybody knows that. The issue is right now, black lives are, are the ones under attack and they're the ones that need our help, as allies, as whatever be it. Um, the Suffolk motto is Suffolk says be kind, I think it should be Suffolk says be complacent, because that's really how Suffolk behaves. That's kind of all I have to say, sorry, my voice is shaking, I'm nervous. But yeah, uh, I just wanted to give a shout out to Stephen Alper, you're a king and kinda the only man I trust. Okay, bye.
Thank you, I actually have some words to say, but I'll wait till everyone else has finished.
Okay, who's next?
I see Alexandria Evans, I believe you're unmuted, if you wanna give it a try.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, since we are on the subject, um, I am a woman of color. I'm a Latina, oh, first of all, if you don't know me, I am, uh, with the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce, I'm part of the PR team. So as I was saying, I am a Latina woman who was adopted by a white father. And so my surname made me also ambiguous many times. And, uh, you know, when I was face to face with someone, it was a completely different story. I've been disrespected as a woman and as a woman of color, which is even worse than a person of color. You know, I mean, I, I was disrespected doubly there. And, um. You know, I can understand how people can see. That the Blue Lives Matter rally was as Mr. Friedman and Ms. Grace suggested, could be argued as intentional. You know, at the incredibly awful fate of George Floyd and the timing of. But I also think we are all forgetting how that hate. Has, you know, from the Floyd's murder, has affected the good officers. And even black officers for that matter nationally. It's not just people of color that are frightened. It's the good officers too, who feel that there is hate. Where there shouldn't be hate for them, you know? And I think that we need to remember that the Blue Lives Matter may have been seen as a. You know, terrible timing. But, you know, I've known many officers in my life, I mean, I, I used to work for a, a law firm who, you know, uh, took care. You know, first of all, I, I used to work for the Bureau, you know, back many, many, many years ago, I worked for the FBI. And, uh, then after that, I worked for. A law firm that represented the New York City Transit Officers. And there were files that were pretty thick on officers, you know, going to civilian. I forget what it's called, and, and, um, internal affairs.
Complete Review Board.
Right, and, um, you know, there were a lot of good officers too. And I think that, you know, in, in hearing those good officers. I, I mean, that I knew were innocent, um, that were proven innocent. I mean, you know, they, they had to deal with, um, a lot of hate. And, uh, they didn't deserve it. And, um, you know, I'm all for Black Lives Matter, I think that, uh, you know, I wanna say. Thank you to all the people that, uh, pulled that event together. I, but I, I do wanna say, you know, that the Blue Lives Matter rally, I think is partially, uh, about. Those officers who go out of their way to take care of everyone, you know? Not, no matter of what color they are, what religion. everyone, you know, not, no matter of what color they are, what religion, you know, whether they're male or female. So, you know, I, I think that we need to take a step back and everybody needs to just breathe. And, uh, yes, all lives matter. And sometimes, you know, white Americans will take offense to the Black Lives Matter and it's not intended to be, um, you know, a slap against, uh, you know, white Americans. And I think that people of color are getting also the same message when they hear all lives matter or the Blue Lives Matter. And I think we all need to step back and take a breath. And, uh, you know, having moved from New York City, I was born in New York City, lived in the Bronx, lived in Queens. The Queens was the most culturally diverse, um, part of our nation. And, uh, coming here to Rockland and seeing that it's not the same at all here. It's predominantly, well, I shouldn't say that. I can't, I can't say that for sure that it's predominantly right, white because we, we have lots of pockets here in the county where there's lots of color. But, um, you know, I've always had, uh, that idea of, you know, there's, there needs to be more cultural togetherness. And, uh, I just think, again, I'm going to say this one last time, everybody needs to take a breath and, uh, take a step back and look at what is happening here in our very own village. I've seen a lot of work, uh, from the police officers. Um, I have not myself experienced anything from the officers. I can't say that anybody else has not. Uh, but again, you know, I think the Blue Lives Matter, even though it may seem intentional, I think we need to think about those good officers and good black officers who go out there, you know, every day. And we may not have black officers here, but it, it is a general statement about what's happening in the nation when you do a Blue Lives Matter here as it is with a Black Lives Matter statement and, and rally. It's about what's happening in the nation. So, um, that's all I'm going to say about that. And then, um, just to also, um, follow with what Gina started, Gina Berlino started saying. Thank you to all of you on the Village Board and, uh, to the Village Recreation Department and, uh, the DPW and, uh, all my team, you know, um, on the Chamber Board, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Saturday was such a great event and, uh, you know, we're hoping to look forward to, to more safe, healthy, you know, restart events, uh, such as the Art and Dine. Um, that's all I have to say and thank you and good night, everyone.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Uh, yes, uh, I see Esme. You're unmuted.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Please say your name and address.
Sure. Esme Van Campen Kramer, three Cobblestone Farm Court.
Where is that located?
Uh, right across from Suffering High School.
Okay.
In Montebello.
Okay, in Montebello.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All good?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, sounds good. Um, yeah, I do want to first initially say I really do appreciate us being able to have like a platform to speak on, even though we're like during COVID and everything and having this interaction, I think it's really healthy and really, a really good thing to happen. And I appreciate that. Um, uh, I do want to initially say, um, again, like the meaning and understanding behind the terms Black Lives Matter versus All Lives Matter, I think it was spoken, um, pretty articulately by Maya Williams saying the whole thing about if you're at a rally for, um, breast cancer and speaking like that, I think that's a very well articulated way to say it, but I want to say another example that may also resonate better with people. Um, let's say your neighbor's house is on fire. You see this from your window and you come out running to help your neighbor in need. As you're running over, your neighbor steps out and yells at you, hey, what about my house? Like, we're not saying one person's, one person is less valuable to any one of us. We're not saying that one person is less, um, deserving or of our attention and care, anything like that. Empathy, absolutely not. It's more that we're recognizing that someone within our community, a, a facet of our community is feeling scared for their lives, um, scared to be like, don't feel valued or appreciated within their own community. And when you hear people trying to redirect this conversation towards everyone else, I think it's not only just distasteful. I think it's like disrespectful, almost a cruel response to people that are trying to speak up and being and just trying to say, hey, like, I don't feel valued. And you're saying, yeah, uh, well, no one else does either. Like, you know, it just kind of, it creates like a strange environment, I think, to, um, have a conversation like this in. Um, I do also want to say, um, talking about police brutality itself, I think something should be spoken about, um, a little bit further. Of course, it is absolutely not a person or I personally, I don't believe that all police are, uh, like white supremacists or even that they're acting on some sort of white, like power thing or trying to inflict some sort of racist agenda onto their communities. Absolutely not. They're all people just working a job. Um, I do believe however, and I've come to this conclusion over a lot of research and understanding. I even spoke to the Sergeant of, um, the Spring Valley Department, actually. Um, and he was, he spoke to me a little bit about that. Um, we like sat down, had a really nice conversation, actually, um, about police brutality and about the system itself that policemen work within. And, um, something to talk about is the fact that when you're in the police force, it's you, you don't report uh, offenses of police brutality against the colleagues in your workforce. I mean, take the situation of Joe Crystal in Baltimore. He was shunned from his police force after bringing light to a situation of police brutality by his colleagues. He was, there was rats laid on his windshield and cheese left on his desk. And in a situation, he also didn't even have any backup. And I spoke with this sergeant in Spring Valley and he even spoke on a situation when he was first starting out and he saw a situation, he was like, oh no, like, that was, that was wrong. Like, I don't know what to do here. But he looked at his colleagues and they're 20 years into the force. What is he going to say? And I've heard even more so many accounts of like situations within police forces where people do not feel comfortable to speak up. They can't, they don't, they don't want to disrespect anyone. They don't want to feel shunned or in any way mess up a system that's already in place. And I think this should be brought to light. Um, again, like it's, you can't, and the, and something that the sergeant brought up as well was that you can't really vet police officers when they're coming into the police force on how they act under pressure in like a situation. Like, sometimes things happen and you can't rea- and it's really how you react, how you behave. You can't interview someone and automatically know what that is. It's impossible. So having a system in place where people can healthily report things and have that genuinely processed and feel and have maybe, I don't know, some third party person in place. I think that would be extremely important to creating a more healthy environment and creating a more healthy police force because you can't understand who the people you are working with until you're in a situation. Um, I think that's only one small facet though of problems that are, you said specifically that you don't want to say that any certain police department is like riddled with police brutality, that it's, that it, that it's within this, um, system. Like, how would I know? Well, it's across the, it's across the country. There are these statistics, like these are coming out everywhere, every major city and then some. There's not, this is not just one single case that happened. This is not just George Floyd. Black Lives Matter is, didn't just start in 2020. This has happened for quite a long time. This has been happening for quite a long time. People are just, I guess, taking advantage of this really horrible situation to try to bring even more light on it. So again, when someone comes against it and paints a blue line down the center of the town, it's uncomfortable to say the very least. It just, it's, I couldn't, I, I was just embarrassed to be like in a town that not only it's, it's just directly going against a protest that they so supposedly supported a week before. I think, it's just, it's incredible. Um, yeah, and I think that you said something about how there was nothing but fairness in your outreach. Um, but you had someone on record saying that they have been, that, I'm so sorry, nothing but fairness in your outreach from the police officers in the past, that there's like, you've done nothing but try to create an environment where everyone feels equal. But someone on record said they've been in a situation where they felt uncomfortable, felt unsafe by police officers. So when you say things like, I don't know, all lives matter or all people matter and oh, you've done all you can, like, we're saying that this is a situation where we're bringing to light issues and we're trying to talk about them. And then you say that, it just, it sounds like you're trying to generalize, um, what people are saying and smooth over. Um, it just feels just, uh, I don't know, disrespectful. I, I, I can't even, yeah. You're muted, by the way. I'm so sorry.
Ed, you're muted.
Keeps going back. Oh, now I'm good. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for those comments and, and, um, it, it, the discussion is, is, is huge. It, it is, is, it's something that we're not going to solve here right now. Um, I mean, as you said, it is a global way to look at it. I feel right now, it seems like an almost, almost an attack just on the police department and the administration while we're not looking at the root cause problem. That's what we need to look at. We need to go back down the line and look at a root, root cause problem. Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Steve, if you're asking to be unmuted, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Yes, no, I, I couldn't control it. So I just wanted to be available to un, unmute later. Thank you.
Okay.
You threw me off there with the sign.
Sorry about that.
Okay. So I think we need to look at the root cause problem and thi- this is what, that, this is what needs to be developed. Looking down the line, I know we're pointing the fingers at policemen throughout, through, across the country. It is a, is, it is unacceptable police brutality and, 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 and deaths that have been caused. But we cannot continue to point the finger at one. We must look at the problem globally, the root cause problem and start from there. Start overall, but we can't blame one section. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yeah. Next is Claire Cunningham. I believe you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just want to talk about how black people are disproportionately killed by the police. They are three times more likely to be killed by the police despite only making up roughly 13% of the American population. Just this, um, month alone, six black trans women were killed in a span of nine days. Um, during this month, which, although weren't, they weren't killed by the police, they weren't protected by them either. When you say that all lives matter, you're inadvertently making a statement that incites fear for many people of color in this community. They make them nervous. They feel like they can't go to the police because because of police brutality and other problems like that. Um, I have a friend who has been pulled over maybe seven or eight times while he was still in high school and he's white. And the, now, it wasn't just by the Suffering Police, but it was often by the Suffering Police and they would always let him go. They would say, oh, you're a good kid or, you know, this is your first offense, so I'm going to let you go. I mean, I've seen it. I've been with him twice when it happened. So I just think it's, I just don't know that the the Suffering Police Department would do the same for, uh, black people, people of color, Latino, the Latino community. I haven't heard any instances of my black friends getting pulled over and then not getting ticketed. Um, I just think it's just a little, like, I think it's something that we need to be addressed and um, I think that if you're going to let go, like, let a white teenager go for speeding, you should be doing the same for the black community as well. So, um, yeah, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Ed, you're on mute.
Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry, unmuted.
Okay, there we go. Now you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Um, we treat everyone here fairly in the Village of Suffering and, and we continue to treat everyone fairly. Police officers use discretion and each case is unique, be it speeding, be it a traffic infraction or whatever. Not crime, no, but using discretion is at the, is, is one of their tools. But just keep in mind, everyone here in the Village of Suffering is treated fairly by the Suffering Police Department. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, next I see, uh, Esha, is it Mywell?
Um, hi, my name is Isha Maywall. Um, I just want to address a few.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, Isha, where do you live?
Oh, um, I live on Smith Hill Road.
And what, what town is that?
Uh, Armont.
Okay.
Um, I want to address a few things that were mentioned. One of them was mentioned by you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you mentioned that, um, police brutality, I mean, um, racism is not just a police issue, but an issue um, that comes from the healthcare system and issue that comes from the education system and issue that happens.
Um, I never said racism comes from there.
You, you were talking about the issue of police brutality.
Right, okay.
How it systemically impacts black people. And, um, you talked about how the police can't be blamed for that particular issue. And you brought up, um, the education system, you brought up the healthcare system, and you brought up other social issues. And I was wondering what your administration has done to maybe aid those areas specifically to help people of color, especially black people and what steps. Or what steps you have already taken for like anything like anti-racism training, anything like, um, diversity bias training, anything like that.
Well, once again, speaking and working with the, um, Commissioner of Human Rights from Rockland County, having attending symposiums on racism and diversity. And that what, and that's what we will continue to work on. Those are the issues that we have been working on here in the Village of Suffering, or I have been.
Um, so I just.
That was actually, I'm sorry, but that, that was actually even before COVID. You know, once COVID hit, a lot of things were put on hold.
Yeah, so I was wondering if like you could share more about like what measures or what steps you're actually taking besides just working with people, like what, like plans you have. Really, what actually is going to be implemented? What is going to be done?
Well, as I indicated, you know, reaching out to the Latino community here in the Village of Suffering, if we're talking of people of color. But as I said, I reach out to all residents in the Village of Suffering, be it people of color or not. We're trying to protect them, educate them in regards to COVID and remaining safe and not catching the coronavirus. Those are some of the issues right now that are undertaken. The other issues was working within, within the town, within the five towns that make up Rockland County and attending symposiums and addressing racism and antisemitism, which is another prevalent issue here that we must address in Rockland County. So continuing, I will continue to work with the Commissioner of Human Rights, Ms. Constance Frazier. And we will continue to develop strategies and implement, um, uh, policies and procedures that will help or protect all people.
Um, just to clarify, will these measures be publicized? Or will they be published or these strategies, will they be, um, like written as part of like?
Well, once, once we develop, we, once we have these meetings and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's work in progress, put it that way. So when work is, work in progress is finished and, and, and then publicized or introduced into the communities, absolutely.
What, um, what avenues do, um, your residents have of holding you accountable to this like racial work that's being done? How do we hold you accountable of like actually implementing these changes and implementing these improvements?
I don't know. I, I would, I would believe that the actions, you know, would, would. I don't know. I, I would, I would believe that the actions, you know, would, would, um, how would the residents hold me accountable to it? I'm not sure on that.
All right, um, I would like for you to, um, be very transparent with the actions you plan on taking. Um, I would like you to publish all the plans or whatever work that you're being, that you're doing with, um, the Human Rights Commissioner. Um, I want you, I want there to be more, um, I, I want there to be more publicity and like, um, pretty much, I just want a way for your actions to be, um, for the residents hold you accountable of these actions that you say that you're taking, because from how you're explaining it to us, it sounds like, they sound like abstract plans. And, um, I want to actually see changes happen in this community, um, specifically for, um, the BIPOC residents. And I think, uh, just like, even like publishing your plans would be like a great step.
You're unmuted.
Now, I know, every, every, every time I try to unmute it, it, it mutes me again. It's an issue here. Um, sure, you know what, it, it would actually be, um, easier if you could reach out to me and give me a call, and we can discuss it more at length, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
At the same time, you know, and I urge all, all of, um, our public participants today to reach out to your prospective towns, the towns that you live in, the villages that you live in, also to make them aware of your concerns. Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak?
I'm sorry.
I actually, um, have, um, a few more things I want to say. Hello? Can everyone hear me?
You're on.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, I just want to address the rhetoric about how the Black Lives Movement is antagonizing police officers. I just want to clarify that unfortunately, that if that is the case, um, police, um, officers do have the choice to resign from their jobs if they are feeling uncomfortable, if they are feeling antagonized. They have that choice. They made that choice to go into that profession, that line of work. They were very aware about, like, the challenges that come from doing that job. That job is a very honorable job, but there are some negatives with that job, and they can resign. Black people can't separate themselves from their race. People of color can't separate themselves from their race. Um, another thing, um, a resident, um, was unsure about, um, calling this, um, county predominantly white. This county is predominantly white, more than 70% of Suffer, of Rockland County's population is white. And also, more than 70% of Suffering's population is white. This data, of course, is from 2019, so things may have changed, but still 70%, more than 70% is white. So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm done.
Ed, you're still muted.
Oh, there you go. Okay, I, I, I understand, I understand all your statements that you're making, but police officers, as you all know, once again, I was a police officer for over 20 years, and I did put on that uniform, and I was able to take that uniform off, and my skin stayed the same color. But when that uniform was on me, with my bulletproof vest, and the oath that I took to serve and protect the residents of the community that I worked for, was taken to my heart. And every other officer, be it a black officer, an Hispanic officer, uh, an indigenous officer, whomever it was, whatever color your skin was, when you put that uniform on, there was no longer a skin color. You were all the same, and you protected and served everyone in the utmost fair, fairest way possible. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, next is Dixie Duggan. Can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dixie. I live at 18 Rockland Terrace. Um, I don't want to take up a lot of time, so I feel like a lot of my friends and acquaintances have really excellently stated a lot of the points that I want to make, and I feel like a lot of, uh, like, a lot of points that, like, all of us want to make. Um, I, I want to thank Steven Alpert. I thought that his email backed me, and a lot of my friends was, uh, uh, very appreciated, and I really, uh, I really thank you for that. Um,
Hope to be able to make a statement soon on that, too.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, Ed, I understand that, I just want to talk about, like, the blue line drawn in general. Um, just get out of the way. I understand that, like, you think that it's, like, it's supporting police officers. I get it, you're a former cop, but as many of the people before me have said, like, the Blue Lives Matter, uh, a Blue Lives Matter, like, movement, I guess you could call it that, is a response to the Black Lives Matter movement. So by supporting the Blue Lives Matter, like, in our town, like, putting that out there, it's just like a direct slap in the face to the Black Lives Matter movement. And you, why wouldn't you, like, put up a banner, like, on the gazebo that said Black Lives Matter if you wanted to support both movements? Like, if you want to do that, that's just like such a simple thing, that would be so easy to give your support to the Black Lives Matter movement, and let, like, black, uh, black citizens of Suffering know that, like, you support them. That, it's just so simple, and it would be so, like, it would just be so easy to do. Um, I really like, I really don't want to talk for much longer, but I understand that, like, you have, I don't want to call them, like, inherent biases, but I feel like from what you have said, I've gathered that, that that's what they might be from working as a cop. And I just really encourage you to, like, like, read, maybe just like, read books by black authors, like, watch, like, media produced by black people that are talking about, like, the police brutality that they have witnessed, like, like, I, that's just so simple. Like, I just, I feel like so much of what the people have spoken before me have said is just really not getting through, and I really, I really want it to. Like, I really hope that you can understand what we're saying. Like, you just keep, you said all lives matter, and I just really, I encourage you to just, like, Google and, like, understand why that's so disrespectful, and like, so, why that, why, like, the Black Lives Matter movement is so important, and it's such, it's not being supported by the Town of Suffering. Um, yeah, I just really, please, just like, I'd love to, like, give you maybe, like, a list of, like, books and media that you can use to educate yourself, like, on police brutality and, like, the discrimination that black people are facing every day. Um, lastly, I'd like to say that, like, pe, like, I've heard a few people that are, were in support of the Blue Lives Matter, uh, rally, say that, like, yeah, like, good cops, like, they're good cops, whatever. Okay, like, I understand that, like, yeah, like, maybe you know a good cop, or maybe, like, your mom or dad, or your sister, your brother, whoever is a good person. Yeah, I'm sure they are, but they are all part of a racist system, a system that is discriminatory. That's, okay, I see you shaking your head, but like, I really would like you to do the research on that.
I, I was a police officer 20 years. I, I am so sorry, but I cannot sit here and have someone say that the entire police departments across this country are racist. It's a disgrace.
That's, that's not what I'm saying.
That is what you were saying, Ms. Duggan. The blue line has been here. I will continue to support the blue line. The red line also was here for the fire department, supporting our services that protect our community. This is, no one is dismissing blue, uh, Black Lives Matters. No one. I said it numerous times, and I'll say it again, and I know you disagree. All lives matter. That's what is important.
Okay, yeah, I, uh, you know what, it's, it's, it's just clear that it's, like, not going to get through you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's just not, this is just kind of like a lost cause, is what I'm, what I'm learning, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next.
Uh, next is Alana Kristen. Oops, sorry.
Not taking that nonsense.
Try it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I want to say Black Lives Matter, and I also want to give a little bit of a history lesson.
Where do you live, Ms. Kristen?
50 Law Road, Slotsburg, New York.
Slotsburg?
Yep.
Okay.
I would like to give a little history lesson and say that racism is deep rooted in the criminal justice system, and slavery gave America a fear of black people and a taste for violent punishment. Both still define our criminal justice system. So, I'm going back all the way to 1619, anyway. Um, so when slavery was quote unquote abolished, the criminal justice system was put in place to keep control of black bodies and black people. Do you guys understand that? Because I, I had a whole class called 1619 for a black history class, if you guys want to look it up. Geneseo, uh, suffering. Anyway, so, I would just like to say that, um, it took decades to finally abolish slavery, but once it was abolished, nothing really changed for black people. Jim Crow laws, and then after they were, um, segregation, and after that, there was the war on drugs. And after that, you know, police brutality is, is still in America, and it's still going on. And I think we should understand what is happening and realize that no one is going to be able to, um, relate to black people, except black people. I, I'm half-black, but I'm not gonna, I don't know what my dad's gone through. You guys do not know what my dad's gone through. All I see is white skin on this, um, Zoom, which, by the way, I think we should have more people of color in this whole, I don't know, I don't know what you guys are. But anyway, um, I just think that we should all be educated on this thing, because obviously it's very important, and you guys need to realize that there is a history to the criminal justice system, and that you should realize that. Um, uh, what else? Oh, also, I want to, a response to Gina. Um, I am sorry that you've been bullied, but I know, I just know that, like, nothing that you've gone through can compare to black people in this state and everywhere else around the world. And I'm sorry for putting you out there and calling your name, but, like, it's something that we should, we should try and understand black people. And we should listen to them, and you guys should listen to them, and our peers, and the younger people of, of America who are going into the streets to talk about this.
Okay, so I continue to say that I hear what everyone is saying, but in the letters that were drafted to me, and the statement that you just made in regards to all of them people, or those people that you were referring to, and on this board, you're labeling, you are labeling us, you are labeling me. I'll speak for myself. I, I feel that is unjust. I feel it is unjust to be called a racist. I feel that, that, that I was violated by being called a racist in the email responses that I received. There needs to be dialogue that is clear and respectful of all. I would not sit here and call someone a racist, or say a them, or a the, or those people. Never. I am highly insulted, and let's move on.
Wait, wait, I just have one question. I don't know what you guys are called, so that's the reason.
You guys?
I don't know.
You guys?
Board, Board of Meeting?
Thank you. Next, please, Mr. Magrino. That's ridiculous. Is there anyone else that would like to raise their hand?
Sorry, Julian's iPhone. I've unmuted you, Julian.
Okay, I see it now. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, so I came in a little late because I had some other obligations I had to finish up, but I'm happy I was able to make it out, and I am happy that, you know, we all have the.
Did you give your name and address?
Excuse me, what's that? Julian, Julian, excuse me.
Yeah.
What is your full name and where do you live?
Uh, I'm Julian Lamont Strutter Jr. I live at 11 Dakota Court in Suffering, New York, right across the middle school on Ramapo Cirque.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So I don't want, I mean, there's a lot to go on here, a lot I've heard, even though I joined late, a lot that I'd like to comment on, but I don't want to hold it up. I know you guys plan it in at nine, and a lot of people want to talk. So primarily, I just wanted to speak about the blue line itself. I understand, I really do, the message you're trying to say, and I, I promise you to know that, um, that you were previously a cop, which is actually really cool. My father himself is in the fire department, but when you, when you go and choose, pick sides, I, I know you say you don't pick sides, but when you support one group and don't really support another group, it, it literally is picking sides, so.
Julian, I, once again, I must clarify that it's not picking sides where I supported and brought flowers to the movement that I was not invited to. I do not attend events that I am not invited to. I did show respect by bringing flowers, by sending a messenger, a religious figure in the community to bring peace and a wreath to carry in solidarity, and which he brought to the other movement down in Spring Valley.
And I honestly appreciate that. I, I didn't know that. That's really nice to hear.
Julian, do you go to, do you go to events that you were not invited to?
Well, I actually wasn't invited to the Black Lives Matter rally, but I did, I did go, so I have to say yes to that.
Okay, that's fair.
So, as I was saying, and honestly, I didn't know that, so that's really good that you personally showed support. But when you went and approved or let it happen, the blue line in, in the town, it's more than just sending flowers or sending somebody who although may have high status or whatever to an event. It's showing that as a town, not yourself, but as a town, we support. You are saying personally that as a town, we support Blue Lives Matter. When you go and.
The police department here for all they do in protecting and serving all the people in the village, just like the red line is symbolized outside the fire department.
And those are all amazing symbols, honestly. Those are all amazing symbols. But I would just like to ask why there wasn't any symbol that would last longer than a day, like flowers, for the Black Lives Matter movement? These blue lines, the red lines, it's amazing, and it shows continued support from you, for, for cops and for the fire department, which I did say my father's a part of, and I, I do appreciate. But there's no lasting symbol in the Village of Suffering that shows Black Lives Matters from you, from our town, that, you know, could be longstanding.
Losing the message here. I think the message, as I continue to say, is that it has to be looked at globally, looked at from the beginning. Just don't look at the police department. We cannot continue to point the finger at the police department. We need to look at it through the life, through the education system, through the healthcare system, through the social services. It's a huge undertaking. It's not, and that's what we are trying to do. As, as much influence I can, as I can have with human rights, that's what I will try to do. But we cannot continually point the finger at the police department. The police department are here to protect and serve us. They had a line between good and evil. This is what we need to focus on. We cannot have anarchy throughout our cities, villages, and towns. I understand each and every one of you that spoke, but we cannot continue to point the finger at the wrong person.
Okay, I, and that's, that's a fair stance to take. But, I mean, how about this, going with your point, starting with the, with the education system. For one, Suffering education system, I've been looked at dirty by teachers, peers, anybody in the hallways of Suffering High School. No, I can't say any drastic action is taken against me personally, but I have seen it happen to other people. I've seen, I've seen. I've seen, I've seen Caucasian students blatantly drunk, high on some drugs or something, patting the neck from OD the, the police officer that everybody loves at Suffolk High School. I can't say anything about it, but everybody loves him. And he's just like, oh, you know, fix it up, kid, let it go. I'm sure you, I'm sure you remember, if not, I'll enlighten you of the one time an African-American student said some nasty comments to the cheerleading team, which nobody supports, nobody can, you know, you know, say it's okay. It's, it's wrong what he did. But he, he said, he said, oh, the cheerleaders are, I don't remember what he said, are like, don't look good or whatever. And he was suspended for that. I mean, when, when you see inequality with like repercussions and stuff, it's, it's hard to say that there's no levels of injustice through our multiple systems. Like you did say, which is true. But also when you say we can't just point at the police, we, Black Lives Matters has been here for the past few years. Sad to say, we're lucky that something as drastic that happened with George Floyd, all these other names, people dying through the police just made, gave the movement, um, some more steam, some more fire to it. And honestly, that's what happened with police. So police are going to be in a limelight currently. Now, there are, there are innate problems with, I'm not gonna say Suffolk, with just the police system, period. How it's just so easy for any Joe Schmo, I know, and actually that's a little rude, so I shouldn't say, I'll take that back. But it is, it's kind of easy for many people to just get power almost instantaneously by joining the police force. So you, when you say we can't, we can't just point at one, one district, we have to look at it globally. But when we look, when we start with global issues and we try to deal with global issues, each town has to do it one by one. You don't just, I don't, I can't just say, oh, the world is, the world's corrupt, let's fix the world together. No. Each town, one by one, has to fix what's wrong with themselves in order to, for the world to be a better place. Now, I'm, I personally feel happy enough to say that Suffolk itself isn't that bad. I feel like we don't have much to work on, but I feel like we do also have a huge problem, a, a problem of ignorance, a problem of people feeling like, when we say, oh, this is racist, racist, they feel personal attacks. When, in reality, it's just like, I just feel like it's the, how do I say? The zeitgeist, the, just the general like ideas of what it's, of different town people are feeling and just the lack of empathy and sympathy for others who, who honestly just aren't as privileged. I, I told you where I live. I live in Ramapo Circuit. It's a gated community and my, my family does well. So I can't speak on behalf of like those who aren't doing as well as me or whatever. But I can't, you also can't say that, okay, well, because we're a nice town and we have some nice officers that we're all set, we're good to go, there's nothing we need to do. I, I really believe there are a lot that needs to be done in Suffolk and, I don't know. Well, I, I don't want to take up your time though, because I've been talking for longer than I wanted to.
Thank you. What I can say now is that I will just continue to work with the Commissioner of Human Rights to continue to betterment for BIPOC, for all people, everyone, for this village of suffering, for the town of Ramapo and Rockland County. Um, so I believe that we're going to move on. Everyone else, if there's anyone else that would like to make a statement, either they can continue, um, they can draft another email or we can move on to the next subject.
I would like to make a statement regarding, I would like to take a few minutes of time to, to, to state a few things. First of all, I want to take issue with Mayor Markounas on one thing. What, what he doesn't seem to understand, in my opinion, is that the blue line is seen as an attack on those who support the Black Lives Matter movement. It's not just a line that supports the police, which it does, and I think we have a fine police department here in Suffolk. However, the blue line itself is seen as a negative attack on people of color. So I want to make sure that the mayor understands that, that is why that this has stirred up the pot. Okay, that's, that's one thing I wanted to say.
That's a justified statement. Go ahead.
I didn't interrupt you, mayor, so I'd appreciate if you don't interrupt me. I have several things I wish to say. Another thing, uh, is, is that, uh, obviously with all the terrible news that we've all heard, you know, with, uh, George Floyd and, and Trayvon Martin and Breonna, and Breonna Taylor, this is really the opportunity and the time that Black Lives Matter movement is gaining some steam. And in my opinion, it is not a, it is not a coincidence that the Blue Lives Matter rally occurred so shortly after the Black Lives Matter rally. I feel it was a, hey, well, you know, let's, you know, there, let's take some steam away from the, from that movement. So I would implore the mayor at the suggestion of one of the callers, which I, I thought was a fantastic idea, let's put up some sort of permanent, semi-permanent, um, acknowledgement that we support Black Lives Matter here in this village. Let's put up a, 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 some kind of, um, some sort of thing at the gazebo, whatever it may be. I think we should do that. I think it would be a good step in the, in the right direction. That's number one. Uh, and another thing I want to, uh, point out is, yes, we received a lot of emails. I want to read the names of those who sent emails, okay? Kayla Brill, these are in no apparent order, they're just, I built the list. Kayla Brill, Eliza Brown, Maya Williams, Bailey Spurling, Taryn Flaherty, Carly Mathias, uh, Ted Bristow, John Pulos, Catherine Sadoff, Melanie Sadoff, David Sadoff, Rebecca Appel, Trevor Dewitts, Jake Moriello, Caitlin Kalanin, Tatiana Cruz, Amanda Melendez, Jared Simon, Maggie Fitzgerald, Mayor Rogers, Dahlia Luongo, Kate Barone, Mary Grace Mulligan, Eleanor Gilpin, Evie Sherman, Emily Nugent, Claire Silverberg, Sophia Thomas, Sarah Kerpic, Esme Van Kampen Kramer, Allison Aaron, Maggie Sheridan, Maya Johnson, Piper Engler, Cameron McGrath, Isabella Engler, Emily Pelecia, Blythe Bracken, Ella Keimer, Ryan DeCosta, Karen Orr, Deidra Ann Quinn, Melissa Keenan, Claire Cunningham, Joanna Castle, Jonathan Friedman, Lucy Rice, Tatiana Barrigan, Anna Lopez, Abigail Smith, Dixie Dugan. Many of those residents were from Suffolk, some of them were not. Um, I do want to point out, this is a village meeting. However, a, a lot of people from outside the village took issue with the blue line. But basically, the consensus from, uh, those people that wrote in, that took the time to write in, and I'm very thankful that they did, uh, is that the blue line is offensive and I agree. I also took the time to highlight certain things that people said that was different than the template because the template is great and I think it has a lot of good points. But there were a lot of individual things that I wanted to respond to. Now, it will take me another five minutes or so to read the things I highlighted. I don't know if the mayor would, uh, appreciate if I did that, you know, right this moment. I, I, I guess let's take a, 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 a gandering from the board, if it would be okay if I read a few of these, uh, comments that I think were worth repeating. Board members, what, what's your thought? Should I?
Steve, I'll, I'll just point out, I don't know if you can see, but there's several folks who have their hands raised. So I don't know if you want to wait until the end to do that or you want to do it now?
Well, I'm happy to do what I planned to do, but I, you know, I, I, I'll defer to the other board members if they feel it's okay.
Rob, I think the, the, the symbol the people are giving is that they approve of Steve Albert's.
No, I, I can see several hands raised for people, I don't know if that's because as a co-host or not. I do see the thumb raises, but just saying, there's people who still want to speak. So I don't know if you want to wait till the end or do it now.
There's seven.
Yeah, let's, let's wait to the end, Steve, at the end of the audience participation.
Well, I, I got the impression from the mayor that he wanted to end the audience participation section now.
Well, there's still people waiting.
There's still people waiting, but we're only going to, you know, with the people that are waiting and then we'll finish. Maybe you would like to address it at the trustee section or at the end of public comment.
Okay, I'll, I'll address at the end of public comment. I thought that's where we were. I got the impression you were shutting the people down. Okay.
Okay, if you're ready for the next, uh, person.
Go ahead.
Identified as H O M E R I A.
Hi, my name is Homaria Lubin. I live five eighty-eight Mohawk Court, Suffolk, New York, Knowles.
Okay.
I'd just like to point out, mayor, that you said that we have to look at this situation globally, but you're not actually in charge of the globe, like you're in charge of Suffolk and us as Suffolk citizens, we're asking you to remove the blue line because we feel attacked by the blue line. Regardless of the fact that you feel as though that like you guys weren't trying to attack Black Lives Matter, the movement, this is a fact, that the movement was created to attack, to counter-attack Black Lives Matter. Therefore, many people see it as an attack and these people are your citizens, the citizens of Suffolk. Now of the globe, we're not pointing fingers, we are simply saying that this line is telling us that you picked a side. You said that you weren't invited to the Black Lives Matter, but I will inform you that I actually have saw many news where there were mayors and police officers that were not personally invited to their Black Lives Matter rally, but they were there, they were there to support the people of color in their community, but you weren't there to support the people of color in your community and we saw that. And actually, there's a video on YouTube, it's public, where I can quote you, mayor, where you said that you want to take a stand and where you said you were no longer cower to mobs. But let me tell you that in fact, at the Black Lives Matter in Suffolk, in downtown Suffolk, there was no violence. It was actually a peaceful protest. So there was no mobs that you had to cower to. You, you actually could have came out and support, you may have sent someone, but what were you doing that day, mayor? I would like to know, besides the fact that you weren't invited, what were you doing that day that you couldn't come out and say something? Because there were mayors that came out and said something to support it. I, many leadership positions sent emails showing that they support this because it's very easy in America to get confused. No one really knows what side you're on, so you have to make it clear, mayor. And it just seems that you made it clear that you were on the opposite side, actually. Because even if you and the people, the people of this board and even the police officers, even if you feel as though you were not racist, they were definitely, and I'm telling you 100%, they were people that were there, that were only there to counter Black Lives Matter. That is the sole reason that they were there. And so you gave them a platform to be there and counter that and make the people of color in your community feel attacked. So you keep saying that there's a work in progress and you're going to work with the humans, right, people? But that's not a plan. You're not telling us a plan. You're just saying, we'll talk, we'll talk, we'll talk. But what are you thinking right now after hearing all these people tell you that we feel attacked? Tell you that like, that we support this movement and we want you to support it too. We want people on this board to support it. We want the police officers to support Black Lives Matter. Because that is how all lives matter. That is all people coming together and supporting one thing because the black lives are the ones that are being attacked. They have been attacked. Like Alana, she gave you a lesson and how the police has been there and has been built off of systematic racism. And so we just need like a real plan. Like, are you going to put out vote? Like, should we remove this white line, like this blue line or like, what's going to happen? Like, should people come out and volunteer? Should we, do we have to sign something? Another statement saying that like, we want this road to be repaved, like what's, that's, that's a plan. That's a plan, mayor. So we want to know that plan. We don't want to know work in progress. We don't want you to talk to the humans person. We are the people. We are here in this meeting because we want that blue line removed and that's simply it. He read a list of people who signed it, who said that we want the line removed.
I think I, we've got your point taken and your point is taken very well. Thank you very much.
Because you, this whole meeting, you've been saying, I understand, I understand, but then you just come back with kind of attacks that show that you really do not understand. You really, I'm telling you right now, that from your
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you're not showing that you're listening and you can come back to me right now. But unless your comeback is going to be a plan about removing the blue line, then do not say anything at all. Then let
Okay, thank you.
Because you're not, we need a plan. Say a plan, let's plan. Should we, volunteers, do we need, do volunteers need to come out and repaint?
We'll have
We need to have an official
We'll have the next speaker now. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is, uh, Michael's iPad. I believe you're unmuted, Michael. You there?
Yes, hello. Michael Curley, how we doing, folks?
You're on.
Hello.
Good. How we doing, Mr. Mayor and board? Um, I'd just like to mention in reference to Mr. Glickle's earlier statement. Um, I just want to point out that he looks very young, so I think he'll be under search for a long time. He had mentioned that about his life and how long he would live. He looks very good, by the way. But I would also like to mention a gentleman named, uh, a resident, his name is Bob Yodowich. He, uh, recently donated back his salary to the village, uh, when COVID happened. He actually, uh, donated back probably of about five thousand dollars to our community, all right? And, and I don't think anyone has ever acknowledged that. I've listened to every meeting, no one's ever thanked him, okay? And I, and I think that was, that was classy of him and luckily enough, he was fortunate enough to do that. And I just think it's important that us as a community thank him, all right, publicly. So, uh, since no one's ever done it, I haven't heard anyone done it, I haven't. And he, he doesn't even know I'm doing this and he probably wouldn't even like I'm doing it, but I'm doing it anyway. But I think it's important to acknowledge him for caring about our community. And that's what makes us a great village, with people like that, okay? And I don't know how many of you have known about that, but he donated his salary for the last few months back, all right? Because he said, Mike, I, I'm not really doing much and, and I care about this village and I, and I want it to do better and survive. And, um, so I just, I just, on behalf of all of us, I hope I can do this. I thank you, Mr. Yodowich, and I thank your family for being a good, you know, you know, family unit here. I had a couple of other issues that I wanted to talk about, but I'm not going to talk about them tonight because I guess time is limited, but, but I just wanted to mention in reference to the main issue tonight. I believe, I believe in life that black people are scared. But in this environment, police officers are scared for their lives. Their wives are scared and husbands are scared for their wives. Their children, parents and friends are scared. So please don't let their beliefs diminish your beliefs, but start to understand their thoughts. Start to understand their fears because their fears are real. Communication has to happen between all people, not just some. People are just showing by doing their Blue Lives Matter, some of them, or a lot of them, are just showing that they care for those police officers, their family and friends, not trying to hurt someone else. So just keep that in mind. I mean, I heard people say, well, why don't you just quit his profession? Why don't he just move on? Because I believe that most police officers do a great job. I had a brother Tommy who was a police officer here who worked for this village for about twenty years. He passed away, got off at night, at midnight shift. He worked from midnight to eight morning, got off with playing basketball with his son, right? And he had a heart attack and died. So I, I, I do, but I do care. I'm a retired fireman in New York City. I worked in a firehouse, the nickname was the car wash, okay? And I worked with all kinds of people and those firemen, those firefighters, okay? Who of all different race. And I only cared that they were firefighters. I didn't care what race they were. But understand, police officers are scared now. Just as I believe some black people are scared, or maybe many black people are scared. So communication has to happen between all people. And when did it, when did it say that I can't have my own personal thoughts as you can? That's why people go to war and die and fight, okay? As long as you're not being discriminatory and trying to hurt someone else. But I have a right to say who I like and who I don't like, just as I have a right to say I like the Mets or I like the Yankees. And I personally like the Mets, so it'll be another tough season. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Curley.
Next, I see, uh, Trevor. I believe you're unmuted.
Hi, yeah. Uh, my name is Trevor Dietz. I live at thirty-seven Parkside Drive. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize for my profile picture. I did not realize everybody was going to see that. Um, secondly, I'm, would like to talk really quickly. I'm not going to talk too long because I am a white guy and I don't really feel like this is my place to talk up and be a spokesperson of the Black Lives Matter movement. That's really not my place. But I am going to talk a little bit about accountability. Uh, look, I get it. Uh, being called a racist is an upsetting thing. Nobody likes being called racist. Nobody likes being called mean. Nobody likes being called anything bad. But when somebody calls you out for something and, and tells you that you did a bad thing, your job is not to say, I didn't do that bad thing, you know? It, it's, it's to listen, to learn, not to defend yourself. If somebody's calling you out, if you genuinely either care about you or hold a higher standard, they want you to do better. Everybody good? I'm, I'm hearing. Okay, uh, when, you know, like when somebody tells you that you hurt their feelings, it is not your place to tell them no. Learning works. That's not how the, the, the works in general. Uh, another thing I wanted to talk about is racism in our town specifically. And I, I get it, it's very easy for, oh, there's no racism here because there's no police brutality. There's no racism here, uh, because, you know, uh, we accept individually, we accept black people, we accept Latina people. Uh, but I'm here to say that racism is not just using a racial slur on somebody or, or the murder of people of color. That's not the boundaries of racism. Racism and things like microaggression, things like what Julian was talking about. We all saw, uh, is Now, we all saw, uh, is people of color being discriminated against in our school systems more harshly than white students would. I mean, for Christ's sake, I was a really dumb kid in high school. I got on Twitter and called the vice principal a communist. I faced no consequences for that whatsoever. And then a kid speaks out against the cheerleading team and he's expelled? Uh, what is that? Furthermore, I participated in a lot of community events as a child. And I think we need to think about as a community, you know, just because we're not murdering black people in our streets doesn't mean that we're not racist. We're still giving off, uh, lessons to, to our students that are, you know, incorrect. As I participated in the Clifford Theater, uh, the, our, our village theater for three years. Uh, one of those years, I, a very strong Jewish white boy, was cast as a Puerto Rican character. That's not appropriate. In fact, that, it was a show called Ren and almost every single character in that cast is supposed to be played by a person of color. There was not one person of color in the entire cast. Furthermore, two years before that, they did an all-white production of Hairspray. That is so incorrect on so many levels, especially considering that the, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with the plot of Hairspray, but it's about the civil rights movement. And there's a cast of white people and there's a cast of black people in the show. And do you know what we did for our cast of black people that were all cast as white? We renamed them the poor people in our show to make it okay. I'm not sure if anybody remembers that, but it was not too long ago. This is 2011. Actually, 2012. It was really not that long ago, less than a decade. So I really think that, thank you, Mr. Markunis, we can see you. Uh, I really think that we need to be thinking about the lessons that we're teaching our kids and we need to talk about things outside, like, again, racism is not just this big, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not something that only happens on an individual basis. It's something that happens systemically. Thank you.
Hey, uh, do you want to speak, Mr. Mayor? Sorry, thank you.
Unmuting. No, go ahead. The next person.
Is A Morgan 1013?
Hi.
Yes, you're on.
My what?
I said you're on.
Please state your name and, and your address.
Hannah Lopez, 29 Van Orden Avenue, Suffolk. So Ed
Unincorporated, unincorporated Ramapo.
Sure. Um, Ed, I have a question for you. So you seem to have no problem putting in a Blue Lives Matter fixture on our street. Sorry, you have no problem putting in a Blue Lives Matter fixture on our street, but you seem to not have answered specifically what Stephen said about putting in a Black Lives Matter fixture, which shows me that the only word you have a problem with in there is black. So what does that say about you and what do you plan to do about that?
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Mayor, shouldn't you answer that?
No, not at this time. No.
Well, let me ask the board. Board, are you interested in posting some sort of banner at the gazebo to honor the Black Lives Matter movement?
I would consider that.
I mean, I would consider it as well. I, I honestly think that, um, more than a symbol is required here. And I think people are not asking for symbols, they're asking for action. Um, I want to say a couple of things if I, if I might.
Uh, I'm sorry, Paul, before you go, there's still, there, if you want to close the public portion before you go on?
Oh, fair enough. Let, let them continue. I, I'll, I'll speak at the end.
Right. No, I'm saying there's, there's only one hand left raised. Now there's a second, there's two hands raised. Both people have spoken previously, so ordinarily you don't let that happen. Now there's three.
Let the last two, let the last two hand raised go.
Yeah, there's three.
Now there's three. I think it, I think, well, it's your call. Board's call. Now four.
No, is there any hands up who have not spoken yet?
Right. It shouldn't be anybody that's already spoken.
No repeats.
Any other, any other comments or concerns will be addressed via email to Clark@SuffolkNY.gov.
Rob, has everyone who wanted to speak get a chance at least one time?
It looks like, and I think I, I don't think this person named Liesl spoke, so I'm going to give that person a chance. Hey, Liesl, you're unmuted.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Did you speak already? No, right?
Can, can you hear me?
We hear you. We hear you.
Okay. So I just, I just have to say, I was, I'm not a Suffolk resident anymore, but I was for 18 years. And, um, I raised my two, um, biracial daughters in Suffolk. And I find it really disturbing, like, there's some really good conversation going on, but I find it very disturbing, mayor, that when questions come up, um, about, you know, why you don't support Black Lives Matter, you say, thank you, next. So can you really, um, maybe answer why you don't support Black Lives Matter? And, and how maybe you can?
I never actually said I don't support Black Lives Matters, but I have indicated what I have been doing.
Hmm. And what is, what is that? Could you, could you explain that to me?
Outreach, the outreach to the community, the needy community for all people in the village of Suffolk.
Hmm. Um, well, I just, I mean, I just, you know, it's, people have been asking you that question and I've heard you say, thank you, next. And that's really, that's really dismissing and it's, it's disturbing, I guess.
And where do you live now, Leslie?
Uh, I'm Liesl, not Leslie. Um, I, I lived in Suffolk for 18 years and I'm now in Orange County.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm just really disturbed that you aren't addressing the, the question about why you aren't supporting Black Lives Matter and you are supporting the, um, Blue Lives Matter.
I say all lives matter, all lives matter.
That, that's, that's not, that's not
I'm sorry, that is the way, I'm sorry, that's the way I feel right now, yes.
Hmm.
So you're getting an answer that you don't like. Okay?
And most, I, I would bet you most of us don't like that answer.
Thank you.
Hmm. Okay, you're dismissing me now. Okay.
All right, next, next caller, please.
All right, Rob. Has everyone had a, had a chance?
Well, this is an interesting one because Fred Salverman spoke at the beginning, but said he didn't want to speak, but now his hand is raised, so I think you should give him a chance.
Okay, give Fred a chance.
Mr. Salverman, I think you're unmuted.
Oh, he's not. He's muted right now.
I've unmuted him. You're unmuted, Mr. Salverman.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
You know, it reminds me, as I listen to this, of, um, an issue called consciousness raising. And really, if you understand that term, it means that, uh, our mayor has to really, he's in need of a little consciousness raising. It's a term that was created back in the 60s or 70s when people really didn't understand the woman's point of view. And that's how it sounds to me now. I will say one more thing. The issue is not really, it should never have been, you know, uh, Black Lives Matter versus Blue Lives Matter. It never should have been that. You can be for, for Black Lives Matter and in no way does it diminish our love for our police. Finally, I want to say to Steve's point, and I think it was Paul Gerard who mentioned this about, you know, we need to have an action, an action that shows that we respect the Black Lives Movement. Even something as simple as a big banner in the middle or at the start of our village, uh, at, I forget the word, at the rotunda, whatever it is, even that little thing would be a tremendous show of the diligent Suffolk support of the BLM Crusade. And that's all I want to say very loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. So talking to the, to the permanent or a show of support or a fixture or whatever it may be, I, and, and maybe this will answer some of the questions that were posed to me earlier. The Art and Dine Project with bringing local artists in to show off local art, prompted me to think of a possibility of commissioning a true artist to either paint, build, sculpt, or, or, uh, water feature in regards to all diversity, all walks of life, and have it here in the village of Suffolk. So that is one thing that I was working on. And I just had this discussion in a brief meeting with the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce. Actually, she spoke earlier, Alexandria Evans. And it was, it, it, it's in the infancy stages to be representative of all lives and all walks of life and all diversity. That's what we started our discussion on. So I hope that help, you know, helps. Is there anyone else?
Yes, there's, uh, Katie Katz. I don't believe has spoken. Believe you're unmuted.
How are you? Um, wait, do you need my address or anything like that?
Yeah.
Um, 11 Margate and Lane, Montebello, New York, 10901, obviously.
Okay.
So I started the petition, um, to remove the black, uh, I mean, the Blue Lives Matter line from, um, the road. But then I saw your response about how our community is like a flower garden, we're supposed to grow and prosper together and it was a symbol of like unity and everything. So my question is why you wouldn't have just created some, like, like a flower garden, like you were saying? Why wouldn't you just create, um, something that symbolizes, um, unity or like a mural or something? Because clearly you're trying to bring the community together instead of just like doing this Blue Lives Matter line and the, like, now you're talking about this diversity mural. Like, why instead would you not just make something that all people could agree on?
Well, that's all we're working on. That's what we just started to develop within the last, I don't know, three weeks maybe. And before that, working once again with the Commissioner of Human Rights and trying to develop, uh, a, a platform of antisemitism and acceptance of all people that make up the population of the village of Suffolk, the town of Ramapo, the state of New York. And that's what it was. We don't know what it's going to be. It may be a mural, a sculpture, a water feature. That's what we're trying to develop now.
Mm-hmm. I guess I'm just confused by I took all of this to kind of prompt you to think of that.
No, this actually took place before.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, but it looks like everyone else who has their hand raised has spoken before.
I agree.
Okay, so that's it. Mayor, if you want to let people speak again or if that's it, the one time?
I need a response.
Public hearing.
What's that?
We have a one, oh, we have a one.
Okay, so then that's it.
Okay.
Vote to close public participation.
Motion to close the public participation.
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone.
Motion, trustee Gerard.
Trustee Gerard.
I want to remind
Hold it, hold it. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I'd wanted to remind before we close the public hearing that there were some more things I wanted to read.
Yeah, go ahead. I want to say something too. Go ahead.
And just, just so we're clear, is the public portion canceled so that we can?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we can close the public portion as long as I can continue. Because it will actually be items from the public, but it'll be so, um, actually, let me let Mr. Gerard go first because I spoke a little bit before and you haven't finished speaking, so.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So all I wanted to say is, um, look, we all have, um, inherent biases just from all our, you know, whether it's our, our racial, socioeconomic background, how, where we were raised, how we were brought, whatever, I mean, what, what environment we had. We all have inherent biases. Um, um, because of that, I mean, it's important that we all listen to feedback. Um, Mr. Mayor, you're the mayor of all the people in the village of Suffolk. There were a lot of people speaking tonight. Your body language, your responses, I mean, were very disappointing. I, I would just say, just listen to the feedback. I mean, you, 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 I have inherent biases due to what, what I, uh, what my experiences have been. You have inherent biases, uh, from, you know, being a police officer and being a white male. It's like I have been a white male in what I do.
Can I just, can I just say one thing? I think really, Mr. Gerard, I think you should speak for yourself with your inherent biases and not imply them onto me. That's, that, that's all I ask.
Okay. I'm just saying that I think you should listen to feedback. And I don't, I don't feel like tonight was a good example of you listening to feedback. Um, now, these are, you know, as you say, these are global issues and they are, they're issues that go on in, uh, many, many walks of life. But, you know, issues change person by person, street by street, village by village. It's not, we can't just cop out and punt on the issue and say, oh, well, it's a global issue, so, uh, everybody's got to work on it everywhere. Um, this, th- these people are coming and they were responding to an event that you participated in a very significant way. And that's why they were speaking tonight. So, um, you, you need to, you need to listen to them. Um, it, it's, it's, um, um, you know, and as I said before, change, they're clearly saying to you that change is needed. Now, I, I personally, as, as Mr. Salverman said, we are very capable of being supportive of the police and supportive of Black Lives Matter. I think the people are saying that by adding a blue line, it, there's a different way to support the police. And that's, that's the message I think the people are trying to send. Um, and they are trying to send. And I think you have to sit back and listen to that, that maybe you, your intention was different, but they're telling you that from their point of view, it's sending a different message. So listen to what they're saying to you. You're, you're not right about everything, just like I'm not. And nobody is right about everything, but you listen to feedback and that's the feedback you're getting. And look, every function, every function can do better. I, I think that our, you know, our police force is highly accredited. I don't think they have as far to go in terms of, uh, there's a lot that can be done, that can be do, can be accomplished across a lot of police forces. I don't think our police force has very far to go to get where, um, where we aspire to be, to be, um, protective of everyone. But, um, every function can benefit from change and be challenged to do better. And, um, you know, as I, as I said in my response to some of the folks that, um, emailed their concerns, Governor Cuomo has signed police reform package in June. He's acknowledging that the police need systemic reform. And every police force in New York is required to go through police reform to review their processes between now and April of next year and, and deliver new policies that address force by police officers, address crowd management, address community policing, uh, address community-based outreach, um, restorative justice practices and training on bias awareness and de-escalation practices. Now, like I said, I think we are very far along in a lot of those things. And I don't think anybody's coming here and saying, you know what, Suffolk has a police brutality problem. We don't. I, I'm convinced we don't, but that's not to say that we can't get better. And so, um, to the people that said, uh, I believe it was, I'm going to mispronounce your name, Esha or Isha, said, how do we hold the mayor accountable? Well, I think you be part of this, you demand to be part of this, uh, uh, policy creation platform that is, is required to be delivered, uh, uh, in the state of New York. If we don't deliver something that is an improvement upon what we're doing now, we lose state funding. So, uh, there's a high, the high degree of incentive to, uh, participate in this activity. And I would encourage, um, a lot of the people that, um, spoke tonight to be part of that. Whether you're in support of Black Lives Matter or in support of the police or support both, be a part of change in the village. Um, demand that, that your voice be heard and that some of the principles that you want, uh, to be included in your police policy gets heard and, and get a seat at the table. Um, I think that's the way to go. And, and we as a board, we have between now and April, so we Um, I think that's the way to go. And, and we as a board, we have between now and April, so we need to get going on this. Uh, thanks, thanks. That's all I had to say.
I'd like to take a turn before Steve. Mine is going to be very short. Black people in America have been getting the short end of the stick for hundreds of years. And that's why I think it's appropriate to say Black Lives Matter. Steve?
Yeah, I, I want to go one step further. Something that was, I was reminded about by one of the people who spoke uh, describing Rockland County, I believe, as seventy percent white, or maybe that was Suffering. I don't, I apologize. I don't remember. I think, I think it may have been Suffering. Uh, and I do want to point out sort of an inherent bias perhaps, or just a coincidence. I don't know. I'm not taking a pot shot here because I think our police force does a great job. Uh, but I will note that I believe the percentage of white people on our police force is approaching a hundred percent. It, it, very close to it, if not exactly a hundred. I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I do want to point that out. Um, also.
Clear, it is not. I'm sorry for interrupting. It's not a hundred percent white, just to be clear.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
I also want to point out to the person as far as accountability. Remember, elections have consequences. Uh, there's been two elections in the last four years where Mayor Markunus won the election without any opposition. Nobody ran against Mr. Markunus as mayor. Um, so I encourage the public to get involved. And maybe if, if you feel that he's not doing a great job, run, run for mayor, because we certainly could use options on the ballot. Uh, we don't want to see another unopposed election in about a year and a half when the mayor is up again. Um, a little less than a year and a half, a year and three months. Um, you know, that's, that's my encouragement to anybody who is willing to run for mayor. Uh, I did want to take an opportunity to just read a few comments. I'll abbreviate it because I was going to read a bit more, but I don't want to take too much time. I, I thought some of the comments were pretty apropos, and I will acknowledge who wrote each of these comments. And, and I'll just read the ones that came from Suffering residents. I'll skip any of the others that did not. I, I have, I'll, I'll read perhaps ten or fifteen comments very quickly. So this one is from Dixie Dugan, who's a resident of Suffering. And she mentions to the mayor that she played softball with the mayor's daughter. And she says, while I understand it was not the intention to disrespect people of color, residents of color, excuse me, by repainting the blue line at the Blue Lives Matter rally, uh, you must acknowledge that doing so in the context of the rally signaled a much bigger, much bigger message than simply supporting Suffering police. I, I do want to also add to that, that in case anyone's not sure, the mayor himself painted the blue line. This was not painted by someone else. This line was painted by Mayor Markunus. I'll continue. One more comment. I understand from this resident. I understand that you may think the blue line drawn at the center of Suffering supports the Suffering police officers, but instead it's a slap in the face to Black Lives Matter movement. It is disrespectful. Okay. I'm going to move on to the next comment that was from Amanda Melendez, a resident. This rally shows that people, I'm sorry, I apologize. This rally shows that Suffering does not care for its BIPOC residents, especially the black residents. The rally diminishes them, uh, excuse me, diminishes the harm that is done to black people here and in the, in this country. I apologize, I'm doing a bad job reading here. Black people are being murdered and lynched at the hands of police simply for being black. Black, blue lives do not exist. It is a job platform that can be taken off. Black people cannot choose their skin and must live with it day in and day out. The police are not oppressed systematically and disproportionately harmed in ways in which black people are. They are in a position of power and we are demanding rightful accountability of those abuses. I'm going to continue. Let's see. And this is from, also from Amanda Melendez. I just want to add this extra comment from another reply. This message shows that the BIPOC residents of Suffering have not been heard and are not supported. So I give you again the option, mayor, of supporting some sort of acknowledgement of the Black Lives Matter movement. I think that we should post a banner at the gazebo. That's my opinion, and I hope the board joins me in that. I'm going to read a little bit from Claire Cunningham. Uh, I am nearly certain that your officials had no intention of being racist by painting this, yet you are greatly uninformed as what the blue stripe really means. Even in our town of Suffering, often hailed as one of the safest towns in America, people of color fear the police, knowing that at any time they could be unjustly killed or treated more harshly than their white peers. I'm not actually sure if the Suffering Police Department employs social workers, so I'm going to skip that comment. Obviously, it's something that's not budgeted about social workers, so I'm going to actually skip that. Um, okay. And let's see if Jake Moriello is a resident of Suffering, and I wanted to add what he said. Uh, blue lives do not exist. I must ask if an unimproved mural was painted on the streets of our town by a black teenager in support of Black Lives Matter movement, how quickly would our local police apprehend them? And within how many hours would the tribute be washed away? Which actually brings up the point, did the mayor have permission to paint this blue line? Certainly, the board did not grant that permission. I want to make that very clear. Um, and I think the last one, there's two more, I think. So this one's from Trevor Dewitts. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names. Uh, having two opposite ends of Route fifty-nine, one in Suffering with a blue stripe and one in Nyack with a Black Lives Matter painted on their respective streets, is a rather contradictory look for United Against Racism, Rockland County. I thought that was apropos. And from John Peter Pullos, it may not be clear how the police support rally claims to support the police is problematic, but I'll explain. The Blue Lives Matter movement was created in response to the Black Lives Matter movement, which itself was created to fight against racial injustice and police brutality. And while I hope this doesn't have to be clarified, I will do so. Regardless, Black Lives Matter does not mean only Black Lives Matter, but that Black Lives Matter too. A fact that much of this country has failed to acknowledge, as African Americans have been continuously treated as second-class citizens. The Blue Lives Matter movement was created with the intention to undermine the Black Lives Matter movement and the equity and peace it strives for. By supporting Blue Lives Matter movement and rally, Suffering moves farther away from the principles that we all strive for in society, one that is safer, more just, and provides an equal opportunity for all. So there were many more comments that I had actually underlined, but looking over them, they were not Suffering residents, so I'm not going to waste the time of, of this village board meeting. But in any case, thank you very much for yielding the floor to me, and I yield it back to whoever needs it.
Okay, so, yes, I'm unmuted. So first off, I'm trustee Alpert. I would truly appreciate if you did not bring my family into this issue. Although it was brought in by a public participant, I see that there was not necessarily, not necessary for you to do it also. And at the same time, the conversation that you were having and what you repeated in regards to the police murdering people as a sitting trustee is irresponsible, even though that sentiment was made by someone else. It is an irresponsible statement to say that again. And, and to bring a family member into the discussion again as a trustee, I find unacceptable. And that is why there was an election in November. Maybe then we can take out and unseat a trustee that is acting irresponsible. We are not turning this into a political arena.
Mayor, I did not mention any members of your family. I'm not sure what you were referring to.
You said my daughter.
Uh, that was a, a person said.
There was no re, no reason to reiterate it. We do not, that is one thing you do not do. Introduce family at a board meeting.
I was reading a letter. Those words were not mine, sir.
That's fine. You brought it back out to my attention. Is there anyone else? That's any other board member? Despicable. Okay, we're going to move on with the meeting. We have the informal presentation by Sam Rottenberg and Robert Bernstein, representing the Chalkalot. Do we have Mr. Rottenberg or Mr. Bernstein?
If they could raise their hand so I could see where they are.
Like they're giving the finger. They're giving, they're giving the boy the finger. Very professional. That's a shame. Okay, if they can raise their hand.
Hey, Ed, what is so despicable about somebody mentioning that they played softball with your daughter?
Oh, you're going to do it too now. Thank you. I, I really, really stop.
I just, that's a simple question. I mean.
No, no, it's not a question to be answered and not a question to be addressed. Call me after the meeting and I'll address it.
Mayor, you're the one that's making an idiot of yourself. I'm sorry to say.
Thank you. Despicable. Okay, I don't see.
All right, I need everybody to settle down.
Mr. Rottenberg or Mr. Bernstein, we don't see their hand raised?
Ed, everybody needs to settle down and we need to get back to village business.
That's what we're doing.
Well, everybody needs to stop and everybody needs to just get to the village business. Okay, I think we need to take a five-minute break. And then we'll go right to police department because obviously the Chalkalot is not coming, just as they didn't come for the workshop.
Well, I think they, they may have been here. Let's give them a chance. Maybe we do move on to something else and we'll try to reach out to them. So we can see who they are exactly.
Okay, all right. I guess maybe they need to be cute to raise their hand. Okay, so let's just move on. We'll just move on to the building department. And Mr. Conley. Mr. Conley, are you on?
And the storm has officially arrived.
Has it?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
All right, well.
Bruce, if you could get Steve. I don't know which number he is.
I'm looking for him. And Mr. Rottenberg is the last name on the list, by the way.
Yeah. And so do you see him, Bruce? Okay, let's, let's go back to Mr. Conley. Is Mr. Conley here? No.
Well, he can't, he can unmute unless we know his number. And Michael's not here, so I don't have his number. Andy, Steve, if you, if you're on, if you could star nine.
Well, there's five hands raised, unfortunately.
Long as we're waiting for the benefit of the public, I encourage you to write more letters and you can state your opinion in those letters. Send them to the village board.
Okay, let's move on to, let's, uh.
Hold on one second, Mayor. Steve, is that you?
I believe so.
All right, Steve Conley, you're on.
There we go. Okay, Steve, so on the, on the building department with the resolution accepting the resignation of Frank Wilson. So I have the resolution in front of me, accepting the resignation of Frank Wilson, Fire Inspector, part-time, effective September eighth, twenty twenty. He resolved the Board of Trustees accepts the resignation of Frank Wilson, Fire Inspector, part-time, effective September eighth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone.
Second trustee Corrigan.
Any further discussion?
I do want to thank Frank for all the work that he's done for all the many years in this village. And I wish him a happy, happy, fun retirement. And it was a pleasure working with him for ten years.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you for your service to the Village of Suffering and continued success. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any knows? Motion passes. Okay. The next resolution here is appointing Michael Stark as Fire Inspector, part-time, effective September eighth, twenty twenty. He resolved Mayor Markunus hereby appoints Michael Stark to the position of Fire Inspector, part-time, effective September eighth, twenty twenty, at a salary of thirty-four thousand, forty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Alp, uh, trustee Gerard, second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion?
I'm very excited about having Mike on board.
Very well-qualified individual that's coming on board, just.
To lose Frank, but to gain Mike, I, you know, we couldn't be in a better spot if we have to lose Frank. That's for sure.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. It is now nine forty-nine PM.
Yes, it is.
Motion to open a public hearing to consider amendments to the code of the, code of the Village of Suffering, Chapter two-five-four, vehicle and traffic, to update procedures for towing and empowerment of vehicles. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Corrigan, all in favor? All right, okay. Um, Mr. Magrino, can you give a brief overview?
Uh, well, this, actually, I'm going to defer to Chief Osborne because he, um, he put it together, uh, and it really affects his department in terms of what they're looking to do. So Chief, you're unmuted if you want to take over.
I beg your pardon, Mayor and Board. This is pretty simple. The, uh, the local law regards to towing vehicles and the statutes we have to deal with is very updated. All we're looking to do is update this. And what we have completed with the Village Board, towards Rob Magrino, is basically the change in the policies deals with the, I should say, updates, application for being on our tow list, insurance requirements, fees which are set by the county, and just some other administrative items. Very simple. It's a little lengthy to read, but it's just updating and amending the laws that have been on the books, making it more modernized for we do. That's all we're looking to do to update the, uh, the code two-fifty-four, the, uh, which is titled, add a section entitled tow.
Okay. So we all have the local law in front of us. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to local law number five of twenty twenty? No. Do you see any hands raised, Mr. Magrino?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Okay, at least, at this time, I'd like to close the public participation in the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I was, I was hoping the chief could maybe pinpoint one or two, highlight one or two changes that, that would come into effect when this is passed, if this is passed.
Of course, Steve, absolutely. One of the things would be, if you give me a sec to look through it, I highlighted some points here. It basically just updates to ensure we have certificate of insurance for the coverage. Um, Steve, for the village, basically just to protect us a little more. We just want to make sure we have that clarified clearly. The radio always written wasn't as clear, I think, a lot of the statutes under this. Steve, one of the things we'd also like to get is a name and address of all the tow truck drivers employed right now. And any changes to that list would have to come to the Village Board, or then get them to me. And I think, um, Steve, one of the other biggest things I like is sometimes we have issues with tow trucks not showing up, canceling, showing up, refusing to tow a vehicle for whatever reason they have. And what that does is, on our part, that, that becomes a bit troublesome when they're on the scene because of the timeframe. So what we're just looking to do is. So what we're just looking to do is be able to remove them from the list if they are continually a problem. We don't have a lot of problems, but we just want to be covered because we did have a problem with a couple of tow truck companies and we just, after speaking to Rob a while ago, Rob Magrino, we decided it's better to have something set in stone, which is obviously what it should be. How we can remove them and what their procedures are if they want to get back on. So just, Steve, sort of formalizes a lot.
I understand. I do have one question because, you know, I read, I read what you sent as well and, and I, I noticed there was basically that all the tow operators have to commit to offering 24/7 support. And I was wondering if that maybe possibly disqualifies certain people that might be independent operators as opposed to those running a company with multiple vehicles and multiple employees who could operate on different shifts. And I wonder if, you know, there should be opportunities granted to people during certain hours if those are the hours they commit to. Maybe. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out.
Oh, totally. And Steve, that's a good question, Steve. And a good note, Steve, everybody in the other board members, all the other, all the departments and towing companies we do deal with, all have committed and they have been committed for 24 hours. That really hasn't become an issue, which, which is a good thing for us.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Oh, God.
Okay, so I have the local law in front of me, amending Chapter 254 of the Code of the Village of Suffering, entitled Vehicle and Traffic, to add section untitled Towing. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Chief Osborne, while you're up. Uh, update, please.
You got it, Mayor. Just to give you a quick update, I know it's been a long meeting so far, but just a couple of things I think you should, um, you should be aware of. We, we had a couple of indictments this month on serious calls. Related to a, um, a violent domestic that officers responded to. Officer Justine and Officer Nick Care as well. Responded to a apartment complex off of Route 22, Wayne Avenue. Report of a woman being assaulted by a male during about 10 o'clock in the morning. I responded up there with them. When the officers arrived, a male party did flee the residence with a loaded Glock by a millimeter in its hand. Officers showed a lot of extreme. Were able to have the suspect put the gun down. We did recover a, a loaded handgun, loaded with an oversized magazine clip in it. Today, officers went to grand jury. And the, the suspect was indicted on obviously felony weapons charges and additional charges. Officers did a fantastic job. We also had another indictment on a domestic dispute between a father and a son where the father stabbed the son. A very pleasant scene. I responded to that as well. Officers York and Adams handled that incident along with Officer Samira. And in regards to that call, the suspect was indicted on a serious assault case for stabbing his son. Adult, his son was an adult, wasn't a kid. Was in his twenties, he was in his twenties. Obviously, very serious incident. So the officers did a big job with that. In regards to hurricane prep, obviously, we're prepared. We met today in my department. We're ready to go. PD wise, I spoke to the fire department, as well as the public works department. We're all ready to go in the morning. If needed, we're overnight. I'm seeing a storm kicking up on the cameras now. Hit up the wind a little bit, so just to let all of you know in the public, we're ready to go if needed anything happens. So we also are, and, and I think trusted you ought mentioned, in regards to reform, while you're absolutely right, and I appreciate that, we are, we do have the policies mostly in place and have had them in place due to us being an accredited agency. Whatever needs to be changed, followed up, obviously, a committee set up that will be done by the man myself, which as Mr. Magrino stated, that's who I think it actually says has to set it up according to the law. And we are starting a school supply drive. We've been, we've been doing it for years. We helped out our, um, some of our less fortunate families turned to village. And we collect school supplies. Obviously, with COVID, what I've been doing this year is put our police trailer on the side of the building. Have people put the supplies in the trail instead of coming into the building. That's for everybody's safety. It's probably a better time. And that's pretty much all I have right now. Unless any questions you're asking.
Well, than, thank you, Chief. And thank you for, for getting another gun off the street and locking up, um, a criminal that deserves to be indicted and he'll have his fair term in, in court. And also in regards to the father and the, the son dispute and stabbing. Once again, we need to, you know, as, as the Suffering Police Department does serve and protect all of the residents 24 hours a day. I appreciate all the work you do. Um, thank you very much. And we will continue the discussion in regards to the, the, um, accreditation and the process that we need to follow with criminal justice reform.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Ms. Cult, Kathy Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. So a few things that we have going on that we've been going, uh, doing since COVID began. We have our wonderful, uh, recreation ladies, Nancy and Elaine. They're doing exercise for seniors at the gazebo at 10:00 AM on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of every week. Chair exercise class at the gazebo is on on Mondays and Wednesdays. Chair yoga is on at the gazebo on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then on Wednesdays, we have a lot of nice things going on. We've got the walking club, which is at Yorkshire Park. Uh, if you've been up that way, our DPW department was able to put the walking signs up there so people know to go around, take nice leisurely walk. It's great for exercise. It's great for socialization. So they've been doing that on Wednesdays at 10:00 as well. Uh, another great thing that we've had at our gazebo is we have Ms. Jennifer from the Suffering Library. She is thrilled to be out there with the kids, with the families. She reads a story, a couple of stories on Wednesday at 11:00 AM. And it's been a fantastic time for parents and families and kids to come out. She reads a book. She interacts with the kids. Everything is socially distanced. And we're so happy that she's willing to come to our gazebo and talk to the families and read with the families. Uh, this past Thursday, we just had another movie night with our nice movie screen that we purchased this year for the reasons of getting people out with social distancing and doing events. Uh, we had Frozen 2 at the gazebo and had a nice crowd. People were pleased to come out for the evening. The weather held for us, thank goodness. It rained about an hour after we were there, so we were lucky to get it through. So we had that. We've got all these other things going on. Um, for those of you that don't know, the village emails that come out to the public are sent out through the recreation department. Um, anyone that has signed up or would like to sign up for village emails, you can send me an email at c mills@ suffernny.gov. We have a huge list of residents, non-residents, people that are interested in our village, in our community. We send them, Nancy from Recreation sends them a great email on Wednesdays. Uh, and then on Fridays, we send an email out for village information, for local information. We help each other out with the chamber. So that comes out through recreation and it's, uh, it's being very, very well done. Uh, the next thing I'll go, I'll talk about, I'll look at my, uh, my agenda. I'll jump down to the dine walk in a minute. But if those of you that have been down by the ball fields, Suffering Little League has begun. Uh, the Suffering Little League has started down at the ball fields. They're thrilled to be able to bring the kids out, the families out. Suffering Little League has a hill protocol of how they run their league. It's turning, it's continuing to stay very well. Uh, parents, again, are thrilled that they're out with their families and their kids. Uh, Suffering Fire Department has started their summer softball league. They go on Friday nights over at the ball fields, down at the softball field. Uh, Recreation is working with the Rockland County Health Department. We have about one more month to finish everything we need to on this complete streets policy. We had our online training on July 21st. It was very well attended. Uh, the gentleman that did our training was great. Get, he got a lot of information out. We had representatives from Good Sam, from the community, from Recreation, from the board. We had great, uh, great feedback. Uh, this coming, uh, next Wednesday, August 12th, we have already time for kids. We already have eight people signed up. And that again is open to Village of Suffering residents. Uh, we have two concerts coming up. We have Country Fresh on Thursday, August 13th at 7:00 PM at the gazebo. We have Crush in concert at the gazebo on August 20th at 7:00 PM. And then a new one this, this season, and again, it's another reason for another opportunity came to us. Rhino Comedy, who's in the village, they aren't able to do, um, their club, their comedy club inside. So they approached us and thank you, um, Trustee Barone, for that connection, that introduction. Uh, they're going to be at our gazebo and they're going to do a comedy night out at the gazebo. So we're looking forward to having them there. Again, these are socially distanced events. We make sure that everybody has their masks. We make sure everybody's there six feet apart from each other. And it, we're very excited for that first time event. Um, a couple of things I didn't mention when I first came on. So the, there's a gazebo and our parks and our, uh, walking path. Those are all put together and cleaned up and maintained every day by our wonderful DPW department. If we didn't have them getting ready for all these events, we wouldn't be able to have them. And it's a seven-day-a-week thing that we, you know, we have our residents walking around the paths, going to the gazebo, coming to our event. So I want to thank Charles and Joe and Stan and everybody in all of the DPW department for all that they do. We're truly lucky to have them. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is the downtown art and dine walk that we had this past Saturday, August 1st. It was a tremendous event that I thank every member of our community that was part of it. The Chamber of Commerce, it was a, an absolute honor working with all of you. Uh, we had volunteers from the community, our staff of Elaine, Nancy, and myself. We had a lot of information out there. We got it ready. But working with the Chamber of Commerce, Recreation, and the Rockland County Tourism Department was a really nice change of getting, uh, getting, getting events together. We, um, were able to get a lot of materials printed with a grant that the Rockland County Tourism Department worked with the chamber. So we were able to do most of this event really non-funded by the village. We had T-shirts that were donated. We had, again, the brochures and the banner that people saw up at the gazebo that was donated, that was paid for by the grant. So it was very, very, uh, well organized. It was very well maintained and it was very well attended. Um, as you know, all the trustees, Recreation doesn't do overtime, so we ran this event on a Saturday evening with our regular schedule. So we had the movie Thursday night. We had the weekend event and we worked all of this into our schedule. So I just wanted to make sure everybody out there knew that the weekend events, the evening events, the morning events, those are all on our schedule. We did not, we did not put in for overtime. It was not a, an overtime event. That's not how we work. We're very cognizant of the way our schedule runs and we ran it very well. And I am so thrilled with the way the first art and dine event worked. Um, I sent a thank you to all the artists today who attended and who participated. And they were thrilled. They loved coming to Suffering. They love meeting our friends and families and people in Suffering. And I commend everybody that volunteered for the event and that was part of it. It really was a wonderful, wonderful first time event. And again, Chamber of Commerce, you all were fantastic to work with. So I know some of them are on the, um, on this call. And I wanted to say thank you because I really thought it was a great collaboration for everybody.
Thank you, Kathy, and, and for everyone involved, you know, from the village clerk's office to the recreation department, to the DPW, everyone involved. But a real special shout out must go to, uh, Ms. Natalie Sheddler. Natalie Sheddler is a graduate of Marywood University, earning her bachelor's degree in art therapy. And she was a great helping hand in developing this whole project and, and art and dine. She's continuing her education in Marywood, pursuing a master's degree in art therapy now. And she's a graduate of Suffering High School and a member of the Art Honor Society. Natalie volunteered her time this summer to share her passion for art by providing artistic advice and direction for Suffering's Downtown Art and Walk Event. And I'll tell you, that volunteerism in her family runs very deep from her mom and her dad. Um, it's truly, uh, thankful that they live here in the Village of Suffering. So I really want to commend Natalie Sheddler for that undertaking. You did a fabulous job. Thank you, Natalie. And, and of course, everyone else in conjunction with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and the Department of, uh, Tourism. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board.
Ed, before you go on, I just want to point out, uh, Mr. Rottenberg, I see on the, on the screen here, but there's no way I can unmute him. So I don't know if he or Mr. Bernstein are on the meeting at all, but if they are and they can hear me, if you can either sign out and sign back in or somehow I email you. So if you can respond to that email, it can get you back on. So I see Mr. Rottenberg, just, there's no way for me to allow him to. And I don't know if there's anybody else here who's before that.
Mr. Rottenberg or Mr. Bernstein, can you sign out and sign back in and try to raise your hand? What is, what is the function for, on a cell phone?
Star nine.
Star nine. And if you call in on a cell phone, please dial star nine.
Thank you.
When we see their hand raised, then we'll, we'll come back to them. But we're going to, um, move on to the grant writer, Mr. Fred Rela. Mr. Rela?
Uh, good evening, Board. I just had to be unmuted. So, uh, it just took a second. Um, I just have a couple of items I'd like to talk about. Uh, we have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant for Abaco. Uh, all the paperwork is in with the state. Um, and what we're waiting for is what's called the Grant Disbursement Agreement. And that's an agreement between, uh, the municipality, the Village of Suffering, and the state, uh, on this hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Uh, the state has said that they're not going to be issuing any grant dispersment agreements at this point in time uh, due to the COVID situation unless it is a, uh, safety or health, uh, situation. Uh, so right now that's on hold. Uh, hopefully it could be released in the next week. We don't know. Uh, but I'll just stay on top of it. I'm working with the Justice Court, Christine Anderson, uh, who heads that up for us for the village. There's a Justice Court Assistance Program, which is run annually by the New York Office of Courts. And it's a grant in which this year we're eligible up to thirty thousand dollars. At the workshop, I mentioned that we were going to be going after some, um, IT type of equipment and then also some PP and E. Well, as it turned out, uh, due to Christine Anderson's tremendous efforts, uh, we have already been approved for the, uh, a scanner and a printer, as well as reimbursement for, uh, PP and E expenses that have already incurred, such as the building of the, uh, barriers uh, between the employees. So, uh, that's fantastic. Um, this grant application is due, uh, in October and we'll have to have a resolution in September. Right now, we're sort of sorting through exactly what are all the elements that we would be applying for, if we're going to be applying for. Also going to be going for a archiving, record-keeping, uh, grant, uh, in the springtime. It's going to be released in the fall. But there's a tremendous amount of work that, uh, needs to be done upfront. I'm working with Mike Giannito on this and spearheading it. Uh, we're, along with Amy, and we're looking at, uh, digitizing the payroll records, the birth and death certificates. So if you ever go into the, uh, the clerk's office and you see all the books up on the wall, those are a lot of birth and death certificates, which are all paper documents. So we're looking to, uh, actually digitize all that and uh, therefore we'll have access to them via the computer. So that would be, uh, a fantastic, uh, thing. And finally, I just want to mention that, uh, the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project, that's a project which we have approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in grants for. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Charles Sawicki, Danielle Curtin, and Mike Giannito in helping to pulling together the first set of invoices of expenditures that have occurred, uh, which is in the amount of approximately fifteen thousand dollars. And those are going to be submitted to the county, uh, within the next 10 days. Uh, and that did take some work to get everything together in the appropriate format that the county was looking for. Uh, so we're on our way with that program and, uh, looking forward to, uh, having it done shortly. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Fred. Awesome news all around, once again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rela. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rela. All right, let's move on to treasurer, Mr. Janito, but I believe he is not here. Let's see, I don't have the Okay. Okay. So I have the resolution here, authorizing transfer of unspent project funds from the capital project funds to the general fund. Do I have a motion?
Actually, may I talk about it for a moment? Okay. So with total agreeance that we can move some of that money to the fire department for their rebuilding, the bucket portion of the truck. But what I would like to do is I would like not to exactly say that we're going to use the balance of the funds for the temperature cameras. Unless it, yeah. So yeah, the remaining 47 will be used to do, wait, wait, sorry, sorry, sorry. I didn't print out page two. But the remaining of the $37,000, I would like not to dictate that it's going to only go to installing the infrared cameras for the temperature gauge. And of course, we cannot further discussion on that. Only because I said I would send out at the workshop, the companies, the companies and everything. Well, I didn't because I didn't want to waste your time. Because my company spent quite a bit of money on them. And we are, we have now stopped using them because they're extremely not reliable. As well as the L'Oreal's are also finding that they're having a lot of challenges with it. Because as we know, new technology is always very stressed. And not that they're not all bad, but I don't want to earmark that money. And I'd like to see what some of the projects that were that came across the table throughout the years of this bond to see what we can do about the facade program.
Okay. So we, the authorization for the transfer of the unspent funds, the 85, you don't want, the 87, we don't want to move forward with.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I want to move forward with it for the fire department so that they can get their truck fixed. However, I don't want to designate the balance of the money for something that we're unsure of that's going to satisfy a very important need of the village.
Okay.
So if we could just revise the resolution with the $37,550 and not put a name or a title on what we're going to be spending that money on. The fire truck needs to be fixed.
Yes. So it's the $37,550 for the fire truck. And we're not going to earmark the remaining capital project funds.
That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Board?
I'm in agreement.
In agreement. Okay. Charles, you agree? And Paul agrees. Okay. Mr. Magrino, we're going to modify that resolution to reflect that the unspent, the transfer, authorizing transfer of unspent project funds from the capital project funds will only be in the amount of $37,550.
Okay. If, I'm sorry, 35?
37,000, 550.
Okay. Okay. If you want to, you can add that now as you're indicating and, and vote on the resolution as is.
Well, the verbiage in it still states that it has the cameras and whatnot. Can we, can we revise it?
Sure.
We're having the conversation and get a new copy sent out tomorrow, Ed?
We can. We're just going to, we'll just remove everything else and we won't transfer the remaining funds. We'll keep the remaining funds in the capital project line open and we'll just transfer the funds to cover the fire truck bucket repair.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, then I have that resolution, authorizing transfer of unspent project funds in the amount, how can we, what kind of language can we put in there?
I do want to point out two things. Mr. Janito is actually on this call. I don't know if he wishes to speak on any of this, but
But he's on vaca, he's on vacation Steve.
Okay. I just wanted to mention he is monitoring this.
I know, but he's on vacation.
All right. So we're going to authorize $37,550 to the general fund to cover the repairs to the fire engine bucket truck.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So I, do I have a motion to that fact?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. I do want to ask, the, the money, just for the benefit of the public, as we discussed at the workshop meeting, was originally borrowed with the intention of repairs at Village Hall, specifically the Corniche area up the top. And my question would be, is will that issue be addressed? Because it's gone unaddressed for now five years almost, or four years. And we don't want further damage to occur to the building.
Right. Well, that's why I'd like to see what plans Ed have been submitted for the original, for the original idea of this capital project. So if you could send those over to me.
I don't have those plans. We'll have to speak to Mr. Zawicki and we'll have to see what, what he actually developed and what we charged him with last week in regards to the lightweight material and but we'll, we'll speak with Mr. Zawicki. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Next resolution is adopting the LGS1 retention and disposition schedule for all New York local government records. Do I have a motion?
Please, Mayor, as you know, the the New York State Archives has had guidelines in effect for many years. There's new guidelines that came out and any municipality that wishes to abide by the new guidelines, these LGS1 guidelines, needs to adopt a resolution similar to the one that's proposed by Michael between August 1 and I believe December 31 of this year. So that's the reason for this, for this resolution. And then, you know, the village departments will be brought up to speed on that and what that means. And, and we'll act in accordance with that.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any luck on Mr. Rottenberg or Mr. Bernstein?
Uh, no.
Yet, no.
No. Okay. Okay. Next up, the Fire Department Chief Koffa.
Good evening. How was everybody?
Okay.
Way past my bedtime.
All of us.
All right. The first item on the agenda tonight is the motion to accept new members. For the hook and ladder, it is Derek Goff, an over 18 member and Corey Wooton, an over 18 member.
So they'll have a motion to accept new member Derek Goff, over 18 and Corey Wooton, over 18.
Motion.
Motion trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. Motion passes.
And thank you board. And for the Suffering Hose Company, we have Karen Scugland, Dovi Landau and Hudson Van Sickle, all of which are under 18 members.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept as new members Karen Scugland, Dovi Landau and Hudson Van Sickle, under 18?
Motion trustee Corrigan.
I have a question, but I'll wait till comment here.
Do I have a second?
I'll give a second, but I also have a question.
Okay. On a discussion.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, I noticed the name Hudson Van Sickle also happens to be a member of our planning board. Is this a different Hudson Van Sickle? I was just curious.
This is a grandson, I believe.
Got it. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. That's my
Kathy Van Sickle also works for the Village of Suffering.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just curious. It was just a little interesting. All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing Penflex to prepare the LoSAP corresponding resolution for the COVID-19 pandemic updated at a cost of $300.
I have the resolution authorizing Penflex to, to prepare the LoSAP COVID-19 resolution at a cost of $300. Do I have a motion?
Motion Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Thanks trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes.
The next two resolutions actually, since the workshop meeting, both of them are no longer required. The Orange County Parade was canceled last Tuesday evening after the workshop meeting, or Monday evening, I'm sorry. And the Westchester County Parade was actually canceled this evening. So those resolutions are
I was expecting that. Okay.
Yeah.
And then just two quick things that aren't on the agenda. In reference to the art and dine we had this weekend in the village, I don't know if anybody got to see. But one of the hose company members, Rob Rojas, constructed an American flag using some old hose that we had lying around. I don't know if anybody got to see that, but I know it was
I did. It was a, Robert Rojas, such a craftsman and artist at the same time, contributing to the Village of Suffering to that show was phenomenal. It was great feedback and thanks.
Yes, we're very proud of him.
Very proud of him. He's, he's really, a really talented young man. Good job.
Can we, is there any way that we could maybe, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Is there any way we could put that in the 9/11 garden for any chance?
It's, I don't, I think it's, the weather would ruin it, to be honest with you.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's, it's kind of like, I could, I'll send you pictures of it so you can see.
Oh, that'd be great. Thanks Jeremy.
And then lastly, just an update on the new engine. All the change orders, all the finals, the changes have been made and signed off on and the truck is now in engineering. Once it goes from engineering, that's, that's probably the longest process that's remaining. And then it's about two months to manufacture. So that's where we're at. And that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing.
Go ahead.
In reference to the storm that is now upon us, all of our members and our officers have been briefed. We do have an action plan in place and we are ready to go.
Thank you Jeremy. And thank you on that recruitment drive. You guys really, the recruitment level is, is unbelievable. How many new members are we picking up every month?
It is.
All right. Doing a good job. Great job. Thank you.
Great news.
Thank you.
And Jeremy, I just want to make sure all you guys stay safe if this storm should be something of what they're calling for. Hopefully the weathermen are wrong once again. We have to hope and pray they are. And please all be safe. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Zawicki?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, good. All right. So the first item is authorizing payment for application for payment number eight in the amount of $14,174 to Valentine Electric for the South Street Emergency Generator Replacement Project.
Okay. I have the resolution authorizing payment number eight to Valentine Electric for the South Street Emergency Generator. Do I have a motion?
Motion trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion?
Yeah. So I think this was mentioned at the workshop. This is the final payment. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can we confirm also that everything is working 100% to it, to our liking? So that when we pay this final payment, we don't have any, oh, but gee, this isn't right or that isn't right?
Well, we always do that for every project.
So at this point, you can say
This project has been completed for quite some time.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Authorizing payment for application of, for payment number three in the amount of $8,440 to Diamond Construction for the 2019 right away improvement project.
So I have the resolution authorizing payment number three to Diamond Construction for the 2019 right away improvement project. Do I have a motion?
Motion Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion?
Yeah, just, Charles, just a reminder of what, what section of the village was that again?
Okay. So that was Lancaster, the curbs. And there was some ADA ramps that were on Foxwood and a couple of areas that, in the areas that we paved last fall.
Okay.
So again, the Belgium block curbing, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure because, you know, we were getting some complaints from residents about some areas of their property still being, you know, dug up, maybe some sprinklers broken, mailbox not put, mailboxes not put back the way they were. I just wanted to
Right. Yeah. So I can, yeah. So I can update you on that. The contractor has come back in the last couple of weeks. And he has completed the majority. There is a couple of items. We're going to reimburse one, one, I think there's actually two homeowners that actually did some work on their own. But the check won't be released until those couple of items are resolved.
Okay.
I'll hold the check until we get a result.
Great. Thank you.
And this is also the final payment. Is that correct?
This is the final payment. That's correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. And the DPW as well is prepared for the storm tonight into tomorrow. And, you know, working along with the PD and the fire department.
Thank you. Charles, was there any word on the tree that came down about two weeks ago, or the branches, the lodge leaders that came down on the house? I think on East Maple? Or was it Maple or Maltby?
Maltby.
On Maltby?
Not on Maple.
Actually, I think it might be Maple. I, I'd have to get back and revisit that. I'm not, I'm not sure where that stands right now.
Okay. There was, there was some type of claim that was submitted. If you could just follow up with that and get back to me, please.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Can you let, Charles, can you let me know what part of Maple it was? Because it has to be on the other side.
Yeah, yeah. I have to get back into the file and check it out. Sure.
It was on the dead end.
Charles, on the, on the right of way where we're reimbursing residents, is that being deducted from the payment to Diamond Construction?
The payment will be made directly from Diamond.
Okay. Gotcha.
So essentially comes, will be deducted, but he would make in those payments directly. So what I'm going to be asking him to do is to give me those checks and I'll make sure that the residents actually get the checks.
Okay.
Before you, before you pay. Is that correct?
Yeah. Right.
Okay. All right. And the DPW once again did another fantastic job. Thank you, Charles and, and your staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Magrino.
Hey. So the first resolution is with respect to Mr. Glickle's retainer. Hey, so the first resolution is with respect to Mr. Glickle's retainer. I've changed it to, it's not so much a change to the retainer, to the authorization, and Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, basically, what resolution I have is resolve Resolution Seventy, can you hear me? Seventy-seven of twenty twenty is amended to indicate that if the amount of the initial retainer in the client trust account for attorney Richard Glickle falls below twenty-five hundred, the village treasurer is authorized to replenish the funds up to fifteen thousand dollars. In fourteen days, receive a monthly statement. I don't think the intention was to change the agreement, it was just, hold on, hold on. I don't think the intention, you're unmuted. You have to unmute yourself now. I don't think the intention was to change the agreement. I think the intention was to authorize Michael to be able to pay additional funds so it didn't go below the twenty-five hundred. Is that correct, Richard?
That's correct. What it does is it will cut down on the incidence of billing so that there'll be enough money in your escrow fund to pay the bills as they come without having to replenish the escrow on a almost bi-weekly basis now. So that's the only thing that's changed. However, that said, I think there's something else that needs to be discussed, and I don't know if you want to wait until this part of the meeting is over to talk to me, or if you want to hear it now. You tell me.
Well, is it an executive session type matter?
Not necessarily. Since I was publicly defamed by someone who obviously had an agenda with respect to a pissing contest between members of this board and who your counsel would be, and for no other reason, none, other than correctly advising the board with respect to the laws that exist in the state of New York and what anyone would be entitled to with regard to the foil, all right? If that's the basis for being assaulted in representing this village, you all know that when I agreed to represent the village, I made it very clear that I would play no part and have no part in whatever your personal differences were. Those continue and are likely to continue in the future, but you're going to need to make a decision right now as to whether or not you want this lawyer to continue to represent the village.
I very much want this lawyer to represent the village.
I know, I want this lawyer to represent the village.
I'm on board as well.
Yeah, absolutely, Richard.
Now, think about this. When someone says, if you continue with Mr. Glickle, your village is going to be sued, that means a couple of things. One, that Glickle doesn't know what the hell he's doing, and that he's malpracticing. Not right, not acceptable.
Agreed.
Mr. Glickle, I appreciate everything that you've been doing, and I, I, nothing but praise for your services here in the Village of Suffering, and I would not want to see you leave, but as you said.
But there's something else, goddammit. That person said that while your prior counsel was representing the village, you've never been sued. Quit no mention of the fact that your goddamn counsel sued you to the tune of eighty thousand dollars, and none of you said a word. And my wife is mad at me now.
Yeah, she is.
If it's any consolation, Mr. Glickle, that is probably the main reason they're not here anymore.
It's not a consolation. I have nothing against them, but for you to sit there and move and say, oh, no, that's not right, sorry, unacceptable. And if she won't apologize to me, you sure as shit should.
Mr. Glickle, I, I apologize to you, and I would like to continue this discussion, hopefully tomorrow with you, but I assure you that we are here to support each other, and with your legal guidance and support, your expertise, we need it. Yes, I believe the village clerk needs to say something also.
I have to say that I have been so impressed by the legal expertise that this village has received. We have addressed issues that have been outstanding. He has been responsive to every phone call, immediate response, as well as his staff, constant guidance and direction, and I think this board made an excellent choice, absolutely excellent in choice with this attorney. And I just, it would be a crime if we went backwards. That's all I can say, because we have moved forward. Thank you, Mrs. Corrigan, for recommending him. He is an excellent choice, and I have to say, I really appreciate working with him every single day. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Mr. Glickle, you have unanimous support across the board from all of us, and I'll certainly apologize for myself for not, not speaking up earlier.
Myself as well.
Ditto, ditto.
You have my full support.
Just, not that it's an excuse of any kind. Usually, when the public is making statements, we just let them say their statement, and even if we don't agree, because this particular resident has also said many things that defamed some of the trustees, but we haven't really commented on that.
All right, I have something that I want to leave you with. I picked this out for you all for this evening. Almost two hundred years ago, Alex Petokovo, a French political scientist, made his trip to the North American continent, and it resulted in his well-known work of democracy in America. This is what he said about us in eighteen thirty-five. Citizens assemble with the sole goal of declaring that they disapprove of the course of government. To meddle in the government of society and to speak about it is the greatest business, and so to speak, the only pleasure that an American knows. An American does not know how to converse, but he discusses. He does not discourse, but he holds forth. He always speaks to you as to an assembly, and so are the origins of the town and village board meeting. Good night.
Good night, Richard.
Thank you. We'll take those, those words and learn from those words from Mr. Glickle, to speak about the government, discuss the government, and speak as an assembly or to each other as an assembly. He's right. I'm guilty of it. I apologize for that, and I think we should learn from that and move forward as we will continue to learn every day in every meeting. So accept my apology to the board with those words spoken. Now I have in front of me the resolution amending Resolution Seventy-seven of twenty twenty to increase retainer for attorney Richard Glickle to fifteen thousand. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Trustee Baron.
Trustee Baron, any further discussion?
Just to, just to make it clear to the public that this is not an increase in cost, this is just an increase in the amount of the retainer so that we don't have to, so we have less frequency of approving his charges, that's all.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
Okay, the next item, actually, it's, the heading was incorrect. That's my fault. They sent it with the previous heading. Last village board meeting, you accepted from Stone Castle Suffering payment for the community benefit, which was park benches and receptacles. This is to accept a stormwater maintenance agreement, a declaration of covenant for five percent discount in rent for first responders and military veterans, a performance bond in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars for public improvements, and a fire lane agreement, which allows the village to enforce fire, enforce, no parking in fire lanes on the site. So those are four documents that we're asking the village board to accept this time, that they have sent in. They've been reviewed by myself and Mr. Zawicki, and they are part of the site plan, so we're asking the board.
Okay, so is it, is the, the title correct in accepting payment, or?
No, the title should be, accept documents from Stone Castle Suffering pursuant to site plan approval. Do you want me to read the entire?
I think you can read the title, the proper title, so the board is aware of it.
Well, it should be, accept, receive, and file from Stone Castle Suffering LLC, stormwater maintenance agreement, declaration of covenant for five percent discount, performance bond, fire lane agreement.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Baron.
Trustee Baron, do I have a second?
Second Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
Okay, next, as you recall, last time, four seventy-five Beacon Partners LLC came before the board to ask about putting a private club at eighty-five Lafayette Avenue, consisting of a cigar bar. They since submitted a formal application for a special permit that the, excuse me, the village board would have to authorize a special permit in order for that to happen at that location. We have the application, but we received from the county health department an indication that the three things that they want to do there cannot be done all at the same time.
Right.
I spoke with the applicant today, and he indicated that they're going to change the application somewhat. So rather than him lose another month, I advised him to change it. I may be exactly sure what he's doing to change his plans, but he is changing it such that it'll meet the requirements of the county. So we're asking to set the public hearing for the special permit next month, September eighth at seven ten PM. That application, or the amended application, will be circulated to county planning and the village planning board, and we'll get recommendations back. And again, at that time, the village board will have the opportunity to review it and make a determination.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to happen in one meeting, right? Like, we're going to have time to review everything and go over everything?
Well, yes, I mean, we're starting the public hearing that night. He did already submit it. You will have it possibly by the end of this week, if not next week.
Yeah, we're going to have it well before the meetings, correct?
Yeah, that's the game plan. It will be circulated. The other one wasn't circulated, but this one will be circulated, because now presumably the county will either, you know, say yes or no that proposed permitted use can occur at that location, but from a, from a health department's standpoint, you are there from a zoning perspective.
After the special permit, if there was an, if there was an action taken after the public hearing to authorize the special permit, that, I believe, is what Trustee Corrigan is, is leading up to, that you would need, oh, we can continue the special.
Correct.
The public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Right.
Can you elaborate, Mr. Magrino? Excuse me. You said that they can't do all three things. So can they do two of the three or only one of the three? What is the, what is the statutory requirement on the county level?
Actually, yeah, and can, can you send that to us, Rob?
Yes, I don't have the letter in front of me, but I can send it. I believe the issue was the serving of food combined with the private club aspect of the smoking lounge, if you will, that you couldn't combine the two of them, you know, in one location. Now, I know that when they spoke to us, they said something about how except homes or something to effect, but, you know, whatever plan they submitted to the county was unacceptable. So I spoke to him today. He indicated that his plan was to change that, I believe, to take out the smoking lounge part of the, the application, and it would just be retail, you could, it would, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there, because I spoke, retail cigar sales, and a place to have food and drink, if you will.
Yeah, I believe it was the bar aspect, the restaurant aspect, and a private club nonsmoking.
Right, the private club aspect would remain.
So why have a private club if you can't smoke?
He will, that's the issue, is, I guess, maybe food, or just a social club, or a place to buy their cigars, and that's.
But he can do that with a retail license.
What's that?
But he can do that with a retail license.
Can do what?
Permit is for the, is for the private club.
Oh.
That's the special permit portion, I believe, is only applied for the private club.
Correct.
Initially, he thought it was going to be a smoking lounge club, cigar club, but now the health department is indicating that you cannot commingle that with a restaurant, but at the same time, he does have that airlock in between the two spaces and the super air filtration system. So he's going to work through those hurdles with the county.
Okay, well, since you've spoken with him, can we have why the county didn't allow it?
No, I don't, I don't understand the portion of why the county won't allow it.
Yeah, can you see the share screen?
There it is.
Right, but you can, you can send that to us, right, Rob? Because, you know, we've all been doing this meeting now since seven o'clock.
It's.
I don't mean, I don't mean to sound difficult, but, and most of us, I'm sure, as you do as well, have to get up and go to work tomorrow. Not that this isn't important, don't get me wrong, but it would be great if we could also have this tomorrow.
Absolutely. No, I'll send it to you tonight.
Okay, well, you can do it tomorrow.
I don't wait till tomorrow.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
I'm sure I can stop share.
Careful what you share.
Okay, I got it. And then, oh, so we, can we have a vote on that, just to schedule it to?
Right, so I have the resolution authorizing a public hearing to be held Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, to consider a special permit for a private club at seventy-five Lafayette Avenue.
I would like to see the plans first and get a grip. I don't want to just rush into starting a meeting. I don't get it. They were supposed to be at the workshop. They didn't make it. We talked about that they were going to miss this meeting cycle, and now all of a sudden, all that conversation's gone.
Well, I, at the time, I didn't realize that at that time that they had submitted, they had actually submitted an application. So they had submitted it, but I did not.
We will be able to, to review the plans when they're submitting the plans, I believe, tomorrow. If we don't have the public hearing set for next month, we lose a month. And just always continue the public hearing.
Right, and just so we're clear, just so we're clear procedurally, pursuant to the statute, they did do the informal, they came for the informal, and they have applied for the special permit, and assuming they get within what they have to get in by the end of this week, you know, he's entitled to the hearing. So as the mayor says, you would have, there's no need to have a vote on September eighth. It's just to start the hearing, and we could say, you know what, I want to look at this, I want further information, I want more input, et cetera. You know, you're not ready. That's a hundred percent fine, and continue the public hearing.
I understand.
Hold it up because he did make the application.
I understand. All right, as long as we have the information prior to the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Trustee Baron.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So that's September 8th at 7:10 PM.
Right, and the last item, the last item, something the board has done in the past is authorize the village to address property maintenance conditions at 27 Hillside Drive, set a public hearing for that. And I don't want to get into too many details, but as you know, the village code permits in certain circumstances where a person has been given adequate notice of a property maintenance condition, and it's not been cleared, and it's a public health issue, the village board can undertake to authorize the property to be cleaned and cleared by the village at the property owner's expense. And I, and the tax rule, part of his tax bill.
I have the resolution authorizing a public hearing to be held Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, to authorize the village of suffering to address property maintenance conditions at 27 Hillside Drive. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Alpert, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Any opposed? No. Thank you, Mr. Magrino. Okay, we're getting down to the wire.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Trustees?
I'd like to comment a little bit about the LED lights.
Okay.
About 300 of them in the village. The O and R will replace 20% a year, 2% they'll do for free. The other 20% are about $230 each. That would be around $13,000 over five, five times $13,000 to the first 20%, and then they'll do another 20% a year for five years. The electrical usage would be about one-third of what we do now, and we need to let O and R know by August 30th. So when Mike gets back from vacation, we will have a cost benefit analysis set to each of you, and then we will have to somehow approve it. And Mike also suggested that we could use some of the leftover money that was not used to fix the facade of Village Hall to pay for this year's lights.
Okay. Great, that sounds great. Thanks, thanks for taking that on there, Mr. Trustee Barone.
I had brought up at the workshop about the water tubes for the, for the memory trees. I wasn't sure if there was any response, because I didn't, I didn't get any response other than that we'd look into it, you know? So I was curious if there's any response to that.
Did you? Oh, I'm sorry, Ed. Sorry.
All right, Charles, did you have any further in regards to the water tubes?
I, I don't believe he's on here.
Oh, he's not on.
Okay, so Ed, sorry, Ed. Steve, I, I spoke, and so did Charlie. We called or, you know, speak with the DCW regularly, Joe and Charles. And two of the trees get watered regularly by sprinklers that are within the village. The other tree has passed the years of when you would put a ring on them. I'm kind of speaking right now for Charles and Joe, but because Charlie and I had checked in with them, we have the answer. So everything is good with the trees, and everything's being watered appropriately, because after a certain age of a tree, and I think it's a year and a half in ground, you don't really need to put the rings on them. It's kind of like a baby walker. After, you know, two years, they, they kind of get away from the baby walker. But there's no trees that are in harm's way that are memory trees. So do you have locations of memory trees?
I will check with Sandy Stead. She seemed to feel there were several trees that were in harm's way, so I will get addresses from her.
Okay, if you can, if you could do me a favor, and you can send those to me, I'll gladly help out DPW with that and walk around and look at the trees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other business to be, come before the board?
I did, but I'm just going to put it in an email.
Thank you. Motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Motion, trustee Barone.
I think it was trustee Alpert was first, I believe, right, trustee? Trustee Alpert, trustee Barone. Any further?
You want a third and a fourth on that?
Right now, when I say all in favor, hopefully.
All in favor.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, guys, thank you very much. Talk to you soon. Be careful.
And stay safe in the storm, everybody, because it's going to be, hopefully, not a humdinger.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.